Okay, we're back in open session.
Okay, and let me announce that there was no reportable action at the closed session, so a motion to adjourn is appropriate now. Or actually, I think the mayor can simply adjourn the meeting.
Okay, a closed session meeting is adjourned, and now we will go into the regular meeting, 601 on May 19th. Call to order, a pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Marks. And please remain standing for invocation by Pastor Malcolm McPhail.
Salute flag, our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the Councilmembers. Continue your service. Kind of a thought for the day, if I could, it's, it ends out with the Hebrew scriptures. It says, "Don't lose sight of common sense and discernment." Hang on to them. And I couldn't think of a better group of people to remind about governance, whether the city, national, county, to do it with common sense, to do it with discernment, and look at unintended consequences, and all of the different ramifications of decision-making. So, thank you for being available, to serve, to give of your time and your efforts, and make common sense, and govern your decision-making and discernment in the greatest light of our community. Thank you. Let's pray real quick. Lord, thank you for this opportunity to work with the city and the governance of the city. Thank you for the Councilmembers, our mayor, or those that are here that are first responders of God. I pray a blessing on our city, and pray for our first responders, that you will keep them safe, watch over them. And I pray for our council tonight, that their decision-making will be for the best of our city, for the greatness of our community. Give them wisdom, discernment, and common sense in all of their government. We thank you for that. Amen. Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to item 1.4, city clerks reporting on posting of the agenda.
Yes, Mayor and Council, the agenda was posted on Friday, May 16th, at 11:19 a.m.
Thank you. 1.5, roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Rocko.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Bozo.
Here. Item 1.6 is orders of the day. It's just a reminder that at 7 o'clock, give or take five minutes or so, we will be going to item 8.2. That was for the reason that people who are interested in keeping up and following the agenda with the Council, the City of Gilroy has moved to districts, so everybody knows that we're having that at 7 o'clock. Moving on to item number 1.7, we have employee introductions. Jimmy, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, members of the public. It's my great honor, Chief Flea, come on up, to introduce you to Chief Rob Flea. Rob's been on the job for a couple of weeks now, and he has spent the last part of his career at Lawrence Douglas County, Kansas, where he was a battalion chief in charge of medical emergency and inter-agency coordination for both the county and the city. He has about 35 years of experience, in which he got his start here in California, has served in the area of San Francisco, and then spent time in the Air Force in the fire service as well. He has some time in his younger life when he grew up in the area, and spent his summers here in Morgan Hill in Gilroy, and has just recently relocated from Kansas, and will be accompanied in the Gilroy community by his wife and his two dogs, Scout and Skylar. Very important. So with that, I'd be, it's my honor to introduce to you Fire Chief Rob Flea.
Well, thank you, Jimmy, for that. First, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, and the public. Truly, it's my honor to be here. In all fairness, I'm about the newest firefighter here, so it's the way I kind of look at it, is I've been here 14 days, and I'm more than impressed by not just the public safety, but the department that you've given me the responsibility of leading. So in my two weeks, I cannot express how welcoming I've been made to feel. So every day is just an honor to come in and put the uniform on and stand up right here. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the support I've received from my wife to allow me to be able to come out here first, and be able to give my attention to the city and to the community. And then, not that I'm counting down, but in 10 days, she will join us out here, so I will be making my home within the community. So, thank you very much, and with that, I'll be passing it to Division Chief Arlen Summers.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and community. It's my honor and privilege to be able to introduce two recently newly-promoted fire engineers in our department. So as they come into the department, they're hired as a firefighter medic, and both recently promoted to the next rank, which is fire engineering, and that's a driver/pumper operator. So when you see the fire engine driving around the streets of the city of Gilroy, it could be one of these two individuals driving. So wave hi, and they'll... Wave hi back! So, and it takes a while to get through the promotional process, and so there's, it's a group. It's always exciting to see upward advancement within the organization, and then we also do, we have some new hires that we'll be introducing, I think, in the next month. Let me first introduce Jess Scapic. Jess was born in Columbia, Maryland, but moved to the southern part of Santa Clara County when he was four. He grew up in Morgan Hill and Gilroy area. He enlisted in the Marine Corps in 2010 after graduating from high school, and served two combat tours of duty in Afghanistan. He was honorably discharged in 2014. He obtained his EMT certification from Mission College and began working on an ambulance within the Santa Clara County Emergency Medical Service. He became a paramedic in 2017 and continued working with Santa Clara County as a medic. He was hired and joined the Gilroy Fire Department in October 2019. He has gone on several mutual aid deployments and is the Chair of Department's Medical Advisory Group. Jess's family lives in Gilroy, and he looks forward to driving around the town in the Gilroy fire engine. Welcome, Jess Scapic.
Everyone, thank you for having me. Looking forward to the opportunity.
Thank you.
Next, we have newly-promoted engineer Ian Nicholas. Ian has been with the Gilroy Fire Department since April of 2022. He lives in Vacaville with his wife Julie and his 10-year-old son Jack. In his free time, he coaches Little League and loves traveling off-road with his friends and family in Baja Mexico. He has a hobby and loves to work on vehicles. He recently promoted to firefighter paramedic with a total of 13 years' experience that he brings to that position, and now he's on his new track to fire engineering. He said the testing process was extremely stressful, but he's thankful for the experience and support of his family, wife, son, crew, and his mentors that gave him the support through the process. And he is bilingual in Spanish, which is really important for our community. Within the department, he's a member of the Department's EMS Advisor Group, the Emsag Group, and next month he will be attending an emergency vehicle off-road training course to be an in-house instructor, kind of a train-to-train, to bring some, through Chief Smith, these connections with the driving company. So we're looking forward to improving our safety in the off-road arena. Please welcome Ian Nicholas.
Once again, just, you know, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you to my crew, you know, the guys supporting me, and really to my family. But we actually have a call right now, so have a good night, and thank you very much.
Moving on to item number two, we have two ceremonial items today, proclamation and awards, so we have two of them that I will come down and read. The first one is declaring May 2025 as National Bike Month, and that will be received by Parks and Rec Commissioner Luis Ramirez. And the second one will be a proclamation declaring May 18th to May 24th of 2025 as National Public Works Week, and I believe that our Public Works Director John Doughty will be receiving that one. So I'll come down and read both of those. Luis, you'll go first. Hang tight, come on up, I'll read it, and then John will come up, and then we'll take a couple pictures. Okay, so City of Gilroy proclamation, whereas throughout the month of May, Gilroy will celebrate biking and the freedom, the joy and the well-being it brings us, as well as the power that more people riding bikes has in making life better for everyone. And whereas Gilroy is nationally-recognized bronze bicycle-friendly community from the League of American Bicyclists, May 15th through 17th, 2025, including hosted energized stations from VTA at Gilroy Transit Center, Gilroy Parks and Rec Commission at the Yubus Creek Trail, and Fifth Annual Ride Gilroy Gardens. Whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Gilroy and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through groups, group rides, races, commuting events, educational programs, charity events, and/or by simply getting out and going somewhere by bike. Whereas bicycling has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy of Gilroy, attracting tourism dollars and local business spending, and reducing pollution, congestion, and parking costs on our streets and roads. And whereas Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, schools, parks, and recreation departments, police departments, public health districts, hospitals, businesses, and civic groups will be joining the League of American Bicyclists in promoting bicycling during the month of May 25. Whereas these groups are also promoting the use of bicycle as both a means of transportation and recreation year-round to attract more visitors to enjoy local parks and trail systems, as well as restaurants, hotels, retail establishments, and cultural and scenic attractions. Whereas these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education during Bike Month, and year-round in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road. Now, therefore, I, Greg Bozo, Mayor of Gilroy, and on behalf of the entire City Council, employees, and residents of Gilroy, join in declaring the month of May as National Bike Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, staff. I just want to say a few words. Thank you for making May Bike Awareness Month. Bicycles connect us. They connect us to our neighborhoods, to our parks, they connect us to our environment, they make us, they connect us to healthier lifestyles. Thank you, staff and Council, for making our streets safer, for showing some respect to our cyclists, and making us all a bit more healthy. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So before I do this next one, I do see that people are standing. There are plenty of seats here, and don't be shy if you guys want to come in and sit down, there's plenty of seats. The next City of Gilroy proclamation, for National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Gilroy. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for maintaining, building, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the residents and civic leaders of Gilroy to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, be it now. Now, therefore, I, Greg Bozo, Mayor of the city of Gilroy, do by designate the week of May 18th through the 24th as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to take a moment to recognize the substantial contributions of the members of the City Public Works and Utilities Departments who provides life-sustaining water and sewer services, safe streets, trails, and paths, as well as parks and community facilities, to recreate and gather, and to acknowledge the importance of these efforts in advancing the quality of life for all who live, work, and play in Gilroy. Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you for recognizing all the men and women within the Public Works Department, the Utilities Department, fleet, and facilities who every day are out working, helping make Gilroy a better place to live, and to thank you again for this. And we like to look at every day being Public Works Day, so thank you.
Moving on to item number three, Council correspondence, we have none. And now moving on to item number four. 4.1 is the Annual Sister Cities Association Presentation, and that will be done by Sister City President David Peoples.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Bozo, and Councilmembers. My name is Dave Peoples, and I'm currently President of the Gilroy Sister Cities Association, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on what is happening with GSCA, or Gilroy Sister Cities, and Gilroy's six sister cities. Firstly, since this is probably a long overdue update to Council regarding GSCA activities, I believe some historical information is probably in order. Sister cities, or twin towns, as many are called, are cities or towns in different countries which share a political or social agreement aimed at promoting cultural, commercial, and economic links. There's a U.S. Sister Cities International Organization envisioned and proposed by President Eisenhower and established in 1956 as a way for U.S. cities to create formal partnerships with foreign cities, promoting peace and cooperation through cultural exchange and understanding. Interestingly enough, the oldest partnership agreement in the U.S. is Toledo, Ohio, formerly adopting Spain, Toledo, Spain, as a twin city in 1931. Gilroy's first sister-city relationships, St. Clair, France, and Monticelli, Italy, were established in 1985. Then came Takomachi, Japan, in 1988, Coror, Palau, in 1994, Tecate, Mexico, in 1996, and Angra, Angra do Harismo in the Azores, in 2004. The success of Gilroy's Garlic Festival and Gilroy's Garlic Industry and Cultural Exchange were the catalysts for three of our sister cities, St. Clair, Monticelli, and Takomachi, each of which have long-established garlic festivals. Science, public safety, and education and cultural exchange were the catalysts for Coror, Tecate, and Angra. GSCA evolved from the ad hoc Special Visitors Committee of the Garlic Festival, which hosted individuals or groups from Gilroy's sister cities when they visited Gilroy or attended the Garlic Festival. Committee members greeted arriving visitors and hosted welcoming gatherings, arranged accommodations, facilitated activities, toured special visitors through the Garlic Festival around Gilroy area, and arranged for or provided transportation as appropriate. After the city formalized a sister-city relationship with Angra in the Azores, and after hearing about and experiencing the wonderful receptions and hospitality that Gilroy students and adults were afforded when they visited Gilroy's sister cities, then Mayor Alpinero was instrumental in establishing a volunteer nonprofit organization to ensure that visitors from Gilroy's sister cities would always be received and hosted consistent with how visitors from Gilroy are received and hosted by and in our sister cities. So what have we been doing? GSCA's mission is to promote peace through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation, one individual and one community at a time, through people-to-people exchanges and initiatives. Our purpose is to foster, encourage, and promote the exchange of culture between cities of foreign nations, similar to the city of Gilroy, and this is what we've been doing with the help of the city, the Garlic Festival, the school district, businesses and organizations, and Gilroy families since 2011. In the last several months, GSCA has hosted representatives from TGIF-A, that's the Taco-Gilroy International Friendship Association, and that's who is basically the sister-city organization in our sister city of Takomachi. We've hosted the Mayor and Secretary of Angra do Harismo. We have assisted Takomachi in the selection of a new coordinator of international relations, Luis Felipe Cruz Velasco, the 24th young adult from Gilroy hired for this position. His immediate predecessor was Gilroy resident Miranda Janisch. We've hosted eight junior high school students, three chaperones, and the school superintendent from Takomachi on their week-long visit to Gilroy, arranging homestay, lodging, providing transportation, and activities. We've been invited and attended the 35th Anniversary Celebration of Sister-City Relationship with Gilroy and Takomachi. We've been invited and attended, along with Gilroy Garlic Festival representatives, the annual Takomachi Garlic and Beef Festival. We've developed a draft of a short- and long-term strategic plan, that is a work in progress, scheduled for completion in September. We reached out to our not-so-active sister cities, St. Clair and Monticelli... Monticelli, it's dinnertime, I'm thinking Mostacholi. To rekindle the activity we once had. Once of our board, once one of our board members will be traveling to each of the two cities while vacationing abroad this year. We've been invited and participated in the 2024 and upcoming 2025 Angra San Juaninios Festival on Terceta Island in the Azores by selecting and facilitating a young adult princess ambassador from Gilroy to be part of the official festivities and activities and featured on the festival's sister-city parade float. Abby Reynolds, a Gilroy girl who just graduated yesterday from, um, dum-dum-dum-dum.
St. John's.
St. John's University in New York. And this year, Kennedy Agnich will be traveling to, traveling to Angra to be our princess representative there. Kennedy, stand up, she's here with us tonight. We facilitated a Gilroy delegation visit to Angra as part of an Azores Islands tour last year, collaborated with Gilroy Garlic Festival to invite our sister cities to the recently-confirmed return of Gilroy Garlic Festival. We've begun efforts to rebuild a more friendly and interactive GSCA website and refresh our social media outreach. We've presented GSCA budget to our fiscal, for our fiscal year, January through December 2025, to the city as we need to, projecting expenses of about $21,600 against a $15,000 billable and fundraising of $13,000. We've reached about 30% of our fundraising projection so far. To date, we've accrued 3,757 billable expenses, completed about 90% of the funding recovery authorized by Council a few months ago. It's very important that I mention and that you understand that all of these travel expenses and travel fun times that we have when we go abroad or visit our Gilroy sister cities, those are all funded with private funds, personal funds, not sister-city funds, not city funds. So, that's my update, and if any of you would like to ask questions, I'm happy to try and answer.
Any questions for Dave? No, thank you, Dave. Great report.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to public comment. So just before we move forward, to be clear, this is public comment for anything that's not on the agenda, so if you are here to have comment about anything that's on the agenda, you will have a chance to do that later in the meeting. So we'll start with public comment, and how many do we have?
Yes, Mayor, Council, we have currently 15 speakers.
Okay, so we have 15 public comment speakers, that'll be two minutes each. And just a reminder for everybody, whenever we have a full house, it's night, I like to take the time to remind folks, as public speaking, public comment happens, just to keep it going, there's a lot of people that are sometimes enthusiastic about certain things, but if you can hold that enthusiasm to yourself, that'll really keep the tempo of the meeting going well. So let's start it off, and go ahead.
First, we have Elena Schroeder, followed by Linda Bostwick, followed by Liz Muriel.
Good evening, Mayor Bozo, Councilmembers and City staff. My name is Elena Purcell Schrader. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley, which has proudly served Gilroy for many years through our low-income home repair rehabilitation and modification program. I'd first like to express our sincere regret for not being present at the previous meeting on May 5th during the discussion about the commitment of CDBG funds. Our absence should not be interpreted as a lack of interest or investment. We remain fully committed to the city of Gilroy and to the low-income residents who rely on our services, many of them seniors, veterans, and individuals with disabilities. We understand there are competing needs for limited funds, and we respect the difficult decisions you face, but we want to caution that reallocating these funds, while well-intentioned, may not be feasible under HUD's guidelines. If the funds are shifted to projects that aren't fully compliant or ready to spend quickly, the risk is very real that HUD could pull the funding altogether if it goes unspent by the deadline. Our program is not only compliant, it's shovel-ready. We're on track to complete repairs for 15 Gilroy households by the end of June, despite limited funding. We've already had to turn away more than 17 eligible families living in unsafe conditions due to a lack of resources this fiscal year. We can't imagine how many families in need, educators, older adults, or others, that will be forced to turn away next year without the availability of these CDBG funds. We urge the Council to reconsider the funding allocation at the upcoming June 2nd meeting, and to continue supporting our critical work. It's effective, immediate, and aligned with Gilroy's top affordable housing priorities. Thank you sincerely for your time, consideration, and continued partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Linda Bostwick, followed by Liz Muriel.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Linda Bostwick, and I also work for Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley, helping Gilroy residents access critical home repairs that keep them safe and housed. I want to take a moment to talk about what really is at stake for our program if our program loses CDBG support. The 17 households we had to turn away this year weren't just facing leaking faucets or minor issues. These are residents here in Gilroy, they may be living without hot water, with damaged flooring causing fall hazards, or with electrical and plumbing failures that could displace them and pose serious health risks. For many, we're the only program that can turn, that they can turn to, but without CDBG funds, there's no program they can turn to. Our work... Our work directly supports the city's affordable housing objective number one. As outlined in the Gilroy's five-year consolidation plan, a priority developed with your residents' input, preserving existing affordable housing, especially for low-income homeowners. It's not just a plan on paper, it's proven. It's something that we put into action every week. And beyond the human impact, there's a financial case. Every dollar spent on home repair prevents more costly outcomes, from emergency room visits after a fall, to code enforcement responses to homelessness. It's a smart, compassionate investment in a long-term stability in this community. We are here, we are ready, and we are committed, but without renewed CDBG funding, the program in Gilroy comes to a halt on July 1. We sincerely ask that at the upcoming council meeting on June 2, the council reconsideres its funding allocation recommendation and allows us to keep doing the essential work for your residents. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Linda.
Next is Liz Murillo, followed by Vilma Peraza.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Liz Murillo, I'm a native of Gilroy, and I'm a board member for Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley. So Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley provides critical home repairs for some of our most vulnerable residents. We are all aware of the housing crisis our city faces. Our TSV stands with the city of Gilroy in prioritizing housing by providing repairs that allow residents to stay in their homes. Repairs we complete are often critical to prevent displacement. Our TSV does so much more than just home repairs. We bring hope, a sense of belonging, a sense of pride, we create neighborhoods, we cross social-cultural boundaries, we are neighbors helping neighbors. I've invited each one of our council members and the mayor to attend a lunch and learn at Synergy Co. Working this Thursday, where you'll learn more about Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley. We have representatives from Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley and myself who'd be able to answer any questions that you have about how Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley is contributing to the city of Gilroy. Don't let the name Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley make you believe that they are not contributing to the success of our community, they clearly are. I encourage you to drive around the mobile parks in town, the wheelchair ramps, the elevators that you see have been provided free of charge to our residents in those homes. These are a necessity for these residents, again, to stay in their homes and to avoid displacement in some cases. Mobile homes don't appreciate in value, they depreciate in value. The homeowner's only hope is to maintain their property, and if they cannot afford to do that or cannot afford to buy another one, that's where our TSV comes in. If the home deteriorates, they're left with nothing or very little, not enough to rebuy if they need to. This past April, we conducted rebuilding days here in Gilroy. Our beneficiaries were a veteran and a former educator. Those are the people who benefit from our services. A final thought for each of you, just because we can do something doesn't mean we should do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
So next speaker is Vilma Peraza, followed by Genevieve Corbin, and I'll just need a few moments to change the translation real quick.
Yes, good afternoon. I would like to speak in Spanish, because Salara people, Spanish people, for the same reason that I'm here.
That's okay. Are you ready for that?
Just one moment.
One second, please.
Okay.
And while we're preparing, if any of you in the back would like seats, there are seats here and here, so don't be afraid to come on up, I know there's a young guy out there. So come on in. So we are ready. Okay, you are ready to go, you have two minutes, and just remember to speak closely to the mic.
Okay. Muy buenas tardes, miembros del consejo. Mi nombre es Vilma Peraza. Soy residente de Gilroy por 15 años, y también tengo un negocio en downtown. En los últimos años he visto muchos buenos cambios en downtown. Las luces de los árboles le dio mucha vida a downtown y también los nuevos negocios. La razón que estoy aquí es porque quiero apoyar a las personas que son dueñas de los camiones de comida. Ellos también tienen los permisos requeridos por la canti y también de Gilroy, y si no los tienen de Gilroy también pueden aplicar por ellos. Estas personas son muy buenas trabajadoras y pagan sus impuestos. Espero que la ciudad de Gilroy no les cierre las puertas y le dé una oportunidad. Gracias.
Thank you. Great job.
Just give one moment. In the meantime, Genevieve Corbin, followed by Juan Rojas.
Hi. I'm here because we've been here before in regards to, I live at the Monterey Gateway Apartments just up the road. We're a senior facility, ages 55 and up, some of our people use walkers, some of our people have a little, I call them go-karts, that they run around the street. Some of our people do drive, and a lot of our people walk. We have a great need for the crosswalk across from our building. We have 10th Street, but that's too far. We've been told that, Zach's been really good about, you know, getting back to me when I called him, but we have been told that the finances for this have been authorized. However, unfortunately, due to hook or crook, some of the finances have not come through or they have been held up. I'm here to plead the case that we need to get this done. We have had a second accident, a hit-and-run. One of our people got hit trying to cross the street, she's in the hospital, she's had a couple surgeries, broke an arm in a couple places. This is like an unnecessary thing. Seniors are not people that, I mean, a lot of our seniors don't go out and do stuff, but they do need to have the way to get across the street. The area from our apartment down is all dirt and rocks, which is dangerous to travel on. There's a lot of people that go up and down Monterey Highway, and we need some kind of stop that says, okay, somebody needs to cross the street. We'd really appreciate it if you guys would really look into maybe helping with the finance until the other finances get let go of, somehow getting something done, because it's really dangerous out there. So I really appreciate you listening to me, and I thank you very much, and I brought several of our tenants with me because they wanted to see how the council worked.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Juan Rojas, followed by Terry Hendricks-Herman.
Just as a reminder, it's ideal if we don't do applause in between speakers, please, we just really want to keep the meeting moving along. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Hello. Speaking behalf of food truck vendors, food trucks should be allowed in Gilroy, California to support small businesses, enhance culinary diversity, and create vibrant community spaces, offering residents and tourists alike affordable, creative dining options while complementing the city's thriving agriculture and festival culture. Let's focus on two specific benefits. Economic angle, permitting food trucks in Gilroy would stimulate entrepreneurship, generate additional tax revenue, and create jobs while keeping food costs competitive in a higher-inflation era. Tourism angle, as a hub for garlic lovers and festival goers, Gilroy could leverage food trucks to attract younger crowds, extend visitor's stay, and modernize its food scene without compromising its small-town businesses. Food trucks matter.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Terry Herman, followed by Miguel Flacher.
Hi, good evening. I'm here to support our local food trucks. As a longtime Gilroy resident, they bring in people to downtown. We've seen great businesses, the breweries pop up. We go downtown every Friday and enjoy our local breweries and the food trucks. When we're down there, we often see families driving through, looking to see who's down there, and they'll pull over and get out, maybe buy a four-pack of beer, and buy something from the food trucks with their kids and move on. They bring in business. So please, and a diversity of food, please open back up for the food trucks. This is what our community wants. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Miguel Flacher, followed by Rose Eng.
Good evening, all. I'm Miguel Flacher, Gilroy resident, and active member of multiple communities of Gilroy. I'm gonna start with saying that mistakes happen, and it's okay as long as we just learn from them. On May 5, I'm not sure what the laughing was for, but the optics aren't great when there's laughter before passing a motion on a night's whim to enforce an outdated ordinance immediately adversely affecting the livelihood of many, resulting in the outright discrimination of food trucks, effectively making it practically impossible for them to currently operate at all in the city of Gilroy. I saw some of the proposed guidelines for trucks and vendors to operate, and I can tell you with confidence, they don't look very good. They are too expensive, cause financial hardship, and I dare to say dance with discrimination, referring to background checks, lab scans, et cetera. I dislike criminals, just like any other protective, responsible adult, believe the background checks and lab scans for when these vendors want to operate at a school property or somewhere similar to that. I encourage everyone to review the temporary vendor permit prices being pitched to the city, which is also another major issue. My personal community mission is to increase the Veteran Hall presence and activity, because bottom line is, they need help, we need help. Having food trucks at their property was going to be a main component for this strategy, not to mention that this enforcement technically seems to affect medical vendors at stage at the Veteran Hall as well. When thinking of permitted locations for trucks or vendors, we get it, a food truck directly in front of a business blocking a view is obnoxious, so make it so that they have to be a reasonable distance away. Do not just pass something that would delete their complete presence from downtown or make it unreasonably difficult or burdensome for the small guy to operate. I want to share something real quick from Pasta Mori. 90% of the street vendors are undocumented immigrants trying to make a living by providing service during hours of the day that no other business is open. No other city in the United States asks anyone that is trying to get a license or permit to open a legitimate business to do a background check or a lab scan. You guys are discriminating the food vendors as criminals just for the simple fact that we are undocumented. You guys don't ask for background checks for any other kind of business. The food trucks are a legitimate business that have permits and licenses with the county that they're in. The county has already checked their identity by asking for their driver's licenses. The food trucks that come to downtown aren't stealing from restaurants that are in downtown because they don't get food traffic. I'm gonna respect the time.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Miguel.
Next speaker is Rose Eng, followed by Kathy Nepali.
Hello. This is the first time I'm attending one of these, so I apologize if this is not the right forum. There are more questions than anything, so I don't know how I get answers to these questions, whether you guys are just gonna follow up at a later time, or this is a question-and-answer session, just let me know.
It's just a comment session that we could follow up at a later time. It's not more than two questions, right?
Yes, so I really, as I mentioned, I don't know what the forum is for raising this question. So first one has to do with streets. Where I live, Santa Teresa and Thomas, the streets have been repaved, so thank you very much, but some of the streets, like Autumn Mall Parkway, is pretty bad. So is that one of the city's streets that can be worked on? So that's the first one. Second one is related to 101. Northbound and southbound within the Gilroy area, starting from Mass and all the way to Monterey Road, the rightmost lane, both northbound, southbound, pretty bad. Is that something that the city can address? And if it isn't, who do I address this to get it fixed? It's pretty bad on our cars. Last one has to do with my specific community. From what I've heard from the HOA, those streets are governed by the HOA, and that the board for the HOA are the ones responsible for making changes. But to me, it presents a safety issue, so my question is, is this something that the city of Gilroy can do something about? Or this is strictly within the HOA, and those streets cannot be annexed somehow? So those are my questions. Again, you know, I'm hoping I get answers. So next one...
Not actually, you're at two minutes already, so if you could take your questions to the Public Works Director.
Okay.
If not tonight, any other time, you can email him, that would be the best way.
I can't speak quickly enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Kathy Nepali, followed by Sheila Monger.
Good evening, Mayor Bozo, city council members, staff, and community. I'm here to share information. As a former educator, I can't help but do it, so I'd like to give you some information. If you look right here at the beginning of the seats, all the way to that gentleman over there, that represents 26 feet. And the reason I tell you that is because it represents how long Native Americans have been here in Gilroy and the South County. Spanish came in 1769, that's only 256 years ago. If you're not Spanish, then you've probably only been here a little bit less than that. Mexico came in 1834, and everyone else when it became the US in 1848. I say that because we have 26 feet. Each foot represents 500 years. So that means that if you're not Native American, you have to stand in the last six inches, because that's how long it's been that Native Americans have been here. I go to the third-grade classes every year, and I've been doing it for seven years, and the students understand who's been here longer. So what I would like to do is read a land acknowledgement statement, and if anyone feels to show respect, you respect when you stand up to say the Pledge of Allegiance or when you do the invocation, I would ask that same acknowledgement and respect for a land acknowledgement. So I'm going to read it now. "We acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the traditional territory of the Amamutsin tribal band of Aloney Costanoan Indians. We formally recognize and respect the Amamutsin as their traditional stewards of this land known as Popolocham. The Amamutsin continue to carry out their obligation given to them by Creator to care for their traditional lands, water, and forests with neighboring tribes, which would include the Tamian, the Muakma, the Esalen, the Awaswas, and the Rumson." Thank you so much. And the sad part is, we heard about housing, and most Native Americans cannot live in their own lands. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Sheila Monger, followed by Giovanni Albanese.
Good evening, Mayor Bozo, council members. My name is Sheila Monger, and I'm a Gilroy resident, and I'm here to talk about the food trucks. Last time we were here, there was a long discussion. There was overwhelming public support. We listened to a paid consultant tell us that we had enough parking, we had business owners here to support the food trucks. We were informed that the ordinance was designed for ice cream trucks, and was told that that ordinance would be updated. And then a member, a vendor possibly, had offered to help you to update the ordinance as he had worked with other cities and had that legal language. Alternatives have been given, such as maybe a central place like the Fifth Street mural, maybe along Gourmet Alley, or partnerships with businesses to use their parking lots, et cetera. But here we are. Nothing has been accomplished. You're sabotaging the downtown right in time for summer traffic, and I find it shameful.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Giovanni Albanese, followed by Matthew Gallion.
Hey, guys, a lot of respect for all of you. I'm a business owner, Settle Down Brewery Downtown. Respect all of you, but I feel like the invocation at the beginning of the meeting makes a lot of sense for my common sense, and there's a whole lack of it with every one of you from last meeting with regard to the decision to vote. I thought we were just gonna discuss about applying some sort of change to the food truck ordinance or the mobile vendor ordinance. Of course, this applies to more than just food trucks. To rush to a decision is so anti-Gilroy City Council. I've never seen you guys rush to a judgment as fast as you did on May 5. And I was shocked, that's why I didn't show up on May 5, but here we are today. Me and Robert, we poured our blood, sweat, tears, and money, of which we don't have a lot of, into our business. Part of our business plan was to provide food to our customers, and that was through food vendors, pop-ups, and food trucks, and now they're taken away from your quick judgment. All we're asking is for you to reconsider that and reverse your decision on May 5. What we could do is find some solutions, and maybe we could have maybe had a solution in place prior to making a decision or a vote, and that would have been the right thing to do, but common sense was lacking on May 5. So, you know, I had a lot written down here, and I'm not even following it. Again, a motion to... Again, a motion taking over here, but I'd like to actually chat with all of you off the record here so we can actually have a conversation to get to a solution because really, I mean, a solution is necessary because you're gonna drive our business out before, you know, anything happens with your plan. Thank you guys for your time, appreciate you all.
See you Gio.
Next speaker is Matthew Gallion followed by Lucien Shop.
Ladies and gentlemen of City Council, in the spirit of tonight, I come before you in the spirit of common sense, that again, as Giovanni so aptly pointed out, was lacking in our last City Council meeting on May 5th where that decision was so hastily made to arbitrarily apply old outdated policy to something that is completely different than what it was intended for. We took an ice cream ordinance, you know, to get background checks for ice cream trucks that are around children, we applied that to all mobile vending. Not just food trucks, mobile health services, everything that pops up in and around town are affected by that. So what I would encourage the City Council to do is propose a future agenda item to add it on, you know, if somebody wants to make the motion, second it, you can have a vote on that to add a future agenda item onto your next meetings so that we can reverse this ordinance, bring the food trucks back. You all can go sit down with the businesses that are affected by this, food trucks included. Talk to them, figure out what solutions work, what solutions don't work, because right now it doesn't work. So we need you guys to do your part, what you're intended to do, and that's to make our city better, not worse. And right now, we're trending backwards, you're making it worse. So I would encourage you all to take a moment, reflect on that. I spoke with a lot of you before, you know, concerning a lot of other issues and not one of you came to me with this beforehand. So, again, take a second, digest that. Hopefully we can get this decision reversed and we can collaborate in the future to safely integrate food trucks back in. That would suffice the City Council, suffice the restaurants and make everybody happy so we can continue to have a beautiful city and keep going forward instead of backwards. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Lucien Shop followed by Dan Donovan.
Can you say the name again Bryce?
Sure. Next speaker is Lucien Shop followed by Dan Donovan.
Is Lucien here?
Do you wanna, do you wanna jump to Dan?
Yes, go ahead and move to Dan Donovan.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, my name is Dan Donovan. I'm the recently appointed Chair of the Gilroy Historical Society Architectural Awards Committee and what I want to do is announce our four award winners for this year. We'll be recognizing them at our annual meeting in the middle of June. So the four winners, we have two commercial properties that are downtown and two residential properties. The two commercial properties are Savvy's Downtown Suites owned by Savannah Longenbach and with a lot of help from Dave Porcella and Gilroy Bowl which is owned by David Leal. The two residential properties are 7600 Carmel Street which is owned by Peter Ortiz and the second one is 321 Sixth Street across the street from the library here and that's owned by Sandra Johnson. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Did we find Lucien? Is he still, is he here?
So this is, so a second call for Lucien Shop and he's our final speaker.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number five, it's reports of Council members. Councilmember Barco.
Yes, I attended the library's grand opening of the Earth and Adventure and I'd like to thank the community for coming out. It was a good turnout and I wanna thank my colleagues that were there. It was a lot of fun and it makes you wanna, wish you were a little kid so you could go run into that thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Fugati.
Yes, on behalf of Visit Gilroy, as previously reported, Visit Gilroy applied for and was accepted to the very first reverse Mexico mission through Visit California. Last week was a big event where Visit Gilroy's director met in Oakland with approximately 20 travel VIPs from Mexico and subsequently took them on a tour of some of Gilroy's highlights. Nine of the travel and tourism VIPs spent the night in Gilroy and the following morning ate breakfast with the mayor at Nacho Moyos Gallery followed by visiting other art hotspots like Rubendario Villa Studios, Sixth Street Studios, the Clove Complex, the Neon Exchange, city murals, as well as seeing Old City Hall, the Cannery Makers Market, Gilroy Bowl and Koval. Visit Gilroy also arranged for a ranger guided tour, the Chickatac Adams Native American Cultural Site and Garlic Ice Cream at LJB Farms. The day concluded with an enthusiastic tour of Gilroy Gardens and a sneak preview of their upcoming Cherry Jubilee menu. Our guests were blown away by the Gilroy Gardens and all that Gilroy has to offer. Gilroy is the smallest community, is one of the smallest communities allowed to participate in this amazing program, enormous for much larger cities and those with highly developed tourism assets like Monterey, Santa Cruz, Anaheim and San Francisco. Mexico sends more international visitors to California than any other country and our guests left Gilroy with a new understanding of how Gilroy can make an ideal hub for exploring California. Visit Gilroy is immensely grateful to the partners who extended themselves to ensure the spotlight on Gilroy was bright and memorable.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks.
Yes, the Santa Clara County Habitat Implementation Board met this past Thursday. We reviewed the draft operating budget for 2026 and 2027 and the proposed projects for the next two years. The annual habitat report covered all the completed projects for this past year. The third report was the annual creek restoration permits for the habitat projects that needed mitigation for clean water and that was it.
Councilmember Hilton.
No report.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you to Dave Peoples because I sit on the Sister City Committee and I think he did a great job.
Councilmember Klein.
No report.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to item number six, the consent calendar. Items number 6.1 through 6.6, I will entertain a motion to approve, excuse me, I'm sorry. I need to move to public comment, I'm sorry, moving too fast.
Yes, Mayor, Council, at this point, we do not have any speakers.
Sorry about that.
There's one issue in the previous minutes on the CDBG votes where Mayor Bozo has shown to have an I and an A, both on that one, so.
Which number?
That would be on the last, on the May 5th minutes.
Oh, and it says, and it says I have an I on the CDBG and I have a N. Okay, you're right about that. Okay, so noted. So I have a motion to approve the consent calendar 6.1 through 6.6 with that note. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Barco and a second from Councilmember Marks. Roll call please.
Councilmember Barco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugati.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. I'm gonna go on to item number seven, bids and proposals, we have none. And with that being said, I'm eight seconds away from seven o'clock, so I'm gonna speak slowly here. But I'll just give you an introduction, we are, we are gonna move on to item number eight, eight point, excuse me, we are gonna move on to item 8.2, we're gonna skip 8.1 as I mentioned earlier and as we've done in every meeting when it comes to the districting topic. And we do that at seven o'clock so the public knows that they have a chance to be here for that. So now that it is seven o'clock, we will move on to item number 8.2 and I will read, go ahead and read, read the topic. The sixth public hearing, sixth public hearing regarding the city's transition from an at-large to a district-based election system for the purpose of receiving the demographer's presentation on the transition process and selecting a final district elections map from the remaining two draft maps D and F, as well as determining the order of elections, that is, which three districts will be on the ballot in the November 26th election and which three districts will be on the 2028 ballot. Determining whether candidates for city council must be residents and electors of the city, of the district in which they seek election for any other period of time prior to filing their nomination papers and declaring their intent to run and introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of Gilroy declaring henceforth that city council elections will be districted, adopting a districting map declaring the order of elections and potentially imposing a residency requirement on council candidates. So with that being said, I wanna make sure there's any communications, ex parte communications from council? There are none and we'll go right to Liz for the staff report. Thank you.
All right. So this is the last hearing, we've come a long way. On tonight's agenda, we'll quickly recap the districting criteria, we used to draw the lines, go over the public hearing schedule, touch on the public testimony we've received since the last meeting, and then go over the final map. So we have draft D and draft F, both exemplify maps that we've seen throughout this process, go over potential sequencing and then we'll vote on the final map and then we'll vote on sequencing. So just a quick reminder, these are the criteria that we've used throughout the process. Each district is relatively equal in population, the districts are contiguous, so they're whole pieces, we're not going from one part of the city to the other and saying that's District One. We're maintaining communities of interest and a part of that is not including political parties, candidates and incumbents as communities of interest. Lines should be easy to identify and then keeping districts compact. So this has been the public hearing schedule and meetings that we've had with the community started back in March and finishing it up today. We have no new maps from last time, but we do have, and this should say 63, emails that we've received from community members about their support for either draft D or draft And this is a little outdated, we received, I believe, 19 in support for draft D and then 44 for draft F. Some of these emails we've received for draft D, a lot of them focused on that draft D maintains a lot of communities, a lot of neighborhoods, particularly on the east side. And then draft F, those emails were a little bit less verbose, but a lot of emails saying we support draft F. And then now we're gonna go over draft D and draft F, you can see that there certainly are similarities particularly on the west side, so really the differences that we're seeing is in the middle of the city and on the east. So let's go over draft D, you all have seen this before, total deviation is 7.5%. This is based on a map that we received from a community member based off of JHO5. It keeps together the east side and uses Hacker Pass as a divider. Here is the map. Oh, and before I forget, if anyone would like translation services, we do have translation devices in the back, so feel free to pick that up if you would prefer to listen to this in Spanish. So here are the dividers, you can see Hacker Pass is used as a main, Thoroughfare uses a divider between districts two and six. As much as possible, we use Monterey Road to be a divider, in fact, all the way down Monterey Road, that is a divider, and then using streets like Third Street, Wellburn as also dividing lines. Total deviation is 7.5% and we do achieve four majority-minority districts with this map. Going over draft F, we talked about this in the last meeting, total deviation is 9.9%. It is under that 10% maximum that we're allowed to have. This again is based off of a public map that we received called Fair One. And then it uses Hacker Pass as a highway, again similar to draft D. However, the differences that we're seeing particularly on the east, it does divide the east side between District Six and District Four while still achieving four majority-minority districts. So here are the street dividers, again Hacker Pass uses a divider. So District One, everything above Hacker Pass is in District One, everything below that is in District Three and then Third Street is also used as a divider for District Three as well. Again, here we see the total deviation is 9.9% and we do achieve four districts with Latino Seva app over 50%. So those are the draft maps that we are considering tonight. Once you pick a draft map that you want to select, that's when we're gonna start talking about sequencing. So obviously your districts are up at different times, so it's a staggered election system like every other city. Three districts are up in 2026, three districts are up in 2028. So when we start thinking about how we want to sequence it, we can think of a multitude of factors. This obviously includes public input, natural election cycles, so if there's somebody in District Six who's up in 2026, could make sense to have that district up in 2026. And then of course, areas that are historically underrepresented, oftentimes cities will use that as an opportunity to put those districts up first. So here is what we're gonna do tonight, we're going to talk about the draft maps, which ones you prefer and then select a map to move forward with. And once you select a map to move forward with, we can't go back when we start talking about sequencing. So when we get into sequencing, that's when we can talk about things like incumbency, so that's why it's important to select a map first and then we'll go over sequencing. And then at the end, when you select your sequencing, that's when you'll vote on the ordinance which will include both the map and the final sequencing. So that's the presentation, pretty short, hopefully so we can obviously allow the public to give their input and then debate which map you would like to move forward with.
Okay, we'll start off with questions. Councilmember Klein.
Questions or comments?
First staff, yes, comments, questions?
No, just, thanks for everything you've done, so I'd just say that, thank you very much, you've worked really hard.
I have one question.
You've really guided us, thank you.
It's been a pleasure.
Any others down here to my left? Councilmember Fugati.
So you went through all of the emails?
Yes.
Did you have a tally between the two?
I did, yes.
What was that tally?
From my count, I got 19 in favor of D and then, or I believe it should be 20 because we got a last minute email, so 20 in favor of D and then 44 in favor of F.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, thank you for clarifying that, I was gonna ask the same question because it was a little unclear because you had a slide and then you changed, so thanks for clarifying that. So, Councilmember Hilton? No, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, we're gonna move to public comment and how many do we have?
Mr. Mayor, Council, at the time, we have 14 speakers.
Okay, so we're gonna have 14 speakers at two minutes each, please.
All right, so our first speaker is Kathy Napoli followed by Joseph Robinson.
My name is Kathy Chavez Napoli and I'm here to advocate for map D. I think it's important for us to recognize that the numbers of 20 and 44 are not as important as preserving the communities of interest. Obviously, the east side has been marginalized for many, many years and that side has not been represented. You have an opportunity because today, tonight is momentous. San Jose adopted district elections in 1978 and there was a tremendous increase in, in representation from people of color. So you will always remember tonight, May 19th, 2025, as a time where you're voting for a map that is going to be number one inclusive, one, one that is equitable and one that will allow people who have been marginalized for so many decades... and one that will allow people who have been marginalized for so many decades to have a voice. So you have the opportunity to do that, and you will be remembered for the vote that you have tonight. So I strongly urge you to support D because that preserves communities of interest and it meets all the other criterion. So I urge you to support and vote for D. Thank you.
Thank you. Bryce, can you call three at a time, so maybe the following two after Joseph can come up so we can, so we can move it along a little quicker?
Certainly. So next speaker is Joseph Robinson, followed by Joanne Fiero, followed by Dan Donovan.
Okay, hello, council and mayor. So the at-large elections that broke state law for creating racial polarization so obvious that it was pointless to challenge it in court gave us this all-white council. To this prickly, all-white city council, this move to district elections was a blow that could not go unanswered. As movement conservatives, for whom democracy is an unacceptable and provocative barrier and who seek and who seek to overlook the needs, interests, and indeed the rights of the near supermajority of Gilroy's residents in order to gather power into their babbitt hands, inquisition and countermeasure will be and can be their only response. Map D is the district map preferred by the better part of their constituency, whom they are dogmatically and ideologically hidebound to overlook, namely working-class families in Gilroy on whose back the wealth of this city was built.
Thank you. Joanne, next, I believe.
Next speaker is Joanne Fiero, followed by Dan Donovan, and then Tania Stumpf.
It's no surprise I'm for map D. I've mentioned it three or four, a half a dozen times. I am definitely opposed to map F, and this is why. This community of interest does not deserve to be split up. We are Gilroy because of our deep heritage amongst Native Americans and Latinos that have worked diligently to keep this community afloat. They deserve more. And I want to just pay attention to all the new events that this community has brought, the Tamal Festival, Frenda, that are in the news. They're bringing commerce to the downtown. It's vitality. It's important. Do the right thing. Don't split that community of interest up just to be, make some one person happy.
Next speaker is Dan Donovan, followed by Tania Stumpf, and then Jorge Mendoza.
Hello again, Mayor Bozo and City Council. I'm here in support of map D. I'm not going to go through all of the points I tried to make in the letter for public comment, but basically, I believe it represents what the what the community that brought the demand letter to you actually wants. So for myself, I won't be affected by the districts particularly. I mean, I have a city council member already that represents my geographic area, but I believe that from an economic perspective, maybe not from a racial perspective, but from an economic perspective, the people east of Monterey need to have their own city council member. And as Congress, or not Congress, Councilmember Fugazi said, and Mayor Bozo, you kind of reiterated at the last council meeting, there may be the rule of unintended consequences that play out here. But we'll have three elections to go through this process, 2026, 2028, and 2030, and in 2031, we'll be looking at the next census, and we'll probably go through redistricting at that point. But by then, we'll have a lot of experience, and we'll know whether the the results of this redistricting process actually work to the benefit of all citizens of Gilroy. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Tania Stumpf, followed by Jorge Mendoza, and then Fabiola Batas.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Tania. I'm, I live on the east side. I am a longtime resident of Gilroy, and I'm a parent here. I do a lot of work with communities and families here in the city, and I want to express my support for map D. The east side has been left, historically left out of key decisions that take place in the city, and this is an opportunity to give the neighborhood and families like mine a real chance of representation. It reflects who we are. I understand that map F has a lot of appeal. It creates competitive districts, but those gains come at the expense of the east side community, and I think you guys really need to take that into consideration. I know that she she said there was twenty emails in support of map D and forty in support of map F, and I think that illustrates some of the problem. Access, equity, and representation matters to this neighborhood. The goal is fair, effective representation, and map D does that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Jorge Mendoza, followed by Fabiola Batas, followed by Alberto Lustre.
Buenas tardes, alcalde and miembros del consilio. Bueno, soy. Mi nombre es Jorge Mendoza. Yo he trabajado, he's been a volunteer in the community of the east of Gilroy for more than eight years. Creo que conozco, voy a decir, un noventa y cinco por ciento la realidad de aquel ambiente. Y he trabajado también por muchos años en el este de San Jose y en el este de Palo Alto, y he mirado cómo esas comunidades se quedan marginadas por tener un solo representante. Yo estoy apoyando el plan F. Esto porque yo creo en la diversidad, creo que donde quiera puede haber personas buenas que pueden hacer algo bueno por sus, como dijo una persona, somos una sola ciudad, todos nos conocemos. Entonces, yo creo que sí puede haber representantes de cualquier lado de la ciudad que se preocupen por el este. Estoy en apoyo del plan F, y otra vez por la experiencia que tengo conociendo el este de Gilroy, el este de San Jose, y el este de Palo Alto.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members. My name is Jorge Mendoza, and I have lived here for many years. I have worked, and I tell this because I have worked and have a lot of experience working in the east. I know ninety-five percent of the reality. I have worked in San Jose, I have worked in Palo Alto, and I know what it means to have just one representative for one side of the city. That is why I am here to support the map F. And the thing is that I do this because I really believe in diversity. I think there's good people everywhere, as one person said, and we're one city, we know each other, and I I support map F because I know how things work in East San Jose, East Gilroy, and East Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next speaker is Fabiola Batas, followed by Alberto Lustre, and then Jesus Becerra.
Yes, two minutes, please. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Fabiola Batas, born and raised here in Gilroy. I've known you forever. I'm here in support of map D. I'd like to see you guys all to vote for that too, because it's not just the adults. It also includes the kids, the workers, and everybody in that community. Our community on the east side deserves to be respected. Our history deserves to be honored. Our community deserves to be to be voiced and heard in in city hall, and the representation needs to be for everyone, and I mean everybody, even our neighbors' dogs, everybody. Everybody deserves that. It's a shame that a lot of city councils don't look to the to the public or to the community, and they still want to divide us in a way where we get our mouths closed. They put this little, you can't say nothing because the ones who vote here has the last word, is you guys. Make a difference in somebody's life, especially to the childrens that come up to be, to look up to you guys, who want to be like you guys. Make that difference. What's not broken don't fit.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker, Alberto Lustre, followed by Jesus Becerra, and then Armando Benavides.
Good evening, city council. Alberto Lustre, longtime resident of Gilroy. Grew up in Gilroy, went to school in Gilroy, and I'm here to support my D. The reason why is because I support the entire neighborhoods. I live in Gilroy in so many neighborhoods, most of the time on the east side, but I lived actually on the westward part. I lived on actually 10th Street, and map D is actually the one that represents the community. Keep the old neighborhoods together. If you look at it, Gilroy, the east part of Gilroy is all downtown, and it's the original neighborhood. The actual citizens of Gilroy that actually build the actual city of Gilroy, all the farm workers that live in, still live on the east side, all the actual roots are actually in Gilroy that come from the east side, or the actual centralized part of Gilroy, 10th Street. And those, that map represents the community a hundred percent. I I urge you to actually support map D. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Jesus Becerra, followed by Armando Benavides, and then Sally Armanderos.
Yeah, give me a moment. I get nervous public speaking. My name is Chuy. I'm from the east side.
There you go.
Hi, I'm Chuy from the east side. I've been in the east side for thirty years. I've been working for nonprofits. I work on some of the campaigns for city council, and I'm asking you to make the ethical, logical choice. The whole point of getting maps from the district is to represent the people of the community, and they're they're telling you the main difference of one is that we're cutting a part of the community out in half. That is not logical. That is not the point of the district map. Other than that, ethical, the right thing to do is to have everybody have a voice, and you're not doing that, and I want that. I've been here for, like I said, since I've been like thirteen years old. I want to see kids inspired by someone that's on the city council from their neighborhood because they made it happen. I want them to to dream that they can make their community better, and today you have a chance. Because by putting D in effect, that's what we're telling the community, we believe in you, we're empowering you to make a difference in our community because we're all part of one community, we're united. And by choosing F, you're dividing the community. And I can tell you one thing, the people from the east side, we're still going to keep fighting because we want to be represented, we want to be heard just like you guys. And I'm just asking you to do the logical, ethical thing. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Armando Benavides, followed by Sally Armanderos and Rebecca Armanderos.
Good afternoons. Good evening, city council. I support map D, and I urge you to adopt it. One thing I like about it, it was written by a community member who went out there and he took the time out to look what the needs of the community are, and I think that's great that it was written by a community member. Map D maintains the integrity of the east side along the north-south orientation, along Monterey Road. All those neighborhoods in that east side share a solid community of interest, and there's no way when you split that like map F does, I think you're doing, it's a disservice to the east side community and what you're doing. A fair analysis of map D allows one to easily conclude that it is the most equitable option presented. It aligns closely with the democratic, geographic, and community interest outlining the demand letter. Most importantly, it creates a realistic opportunity for members of the proponents' group to select a representative of their choice, something that the demand letter noted has been historically lacking under Gilroy's at-large election system. The, by adopting that map D, this council will not only demonstrate its commitment to fair representation, but it also will significantly reduce the city's legal exposure to and the financial burden of litigation. I strongly urge you to prioritize equity, legal prudence, community input, saving our limited resources so that we don't have to go face a financial burden of litigation, and select map D as the right choice. No to F, yes to D. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Sally Armanderos, followed by Rebecca Armanderos, and then Erin O'Brien.
Good evening to all of you, and I'm Sally Armanderos, and I'm here because to remind you that the California Voting Rights Act has existed since the year 2001, and it's time that this council abide by it. It was created to allow minority disenfranchised groups in California the right to be represented by someone who lives in their community and shares their interests and concerns. Today is a day that you, the existing council members, can show that all Gilroians mean something to you and that you believe they should have equal and fair representation. As you see here, a city councilperson today, your only concern should be what is fair representation to all Gilroians? Are large minority areas' interests met? Because to manipulate a map is not legal. It's not legal, and it's not honoring the Voting Rights Act and further, it is very, really illegal. You are our council, and I tell you, it's not only abiding the law, but honoring the intentions of the law, which is the right thing to do, and that is to have equal representation straight. And you've heard dozens of Gilroians expressing how important it is to them to have fair representation in their community. Answer these, honor these residents. Gilroy is a town of many faces. Honor them. Don't be afraid of your neighbor who lives across town. They care about Gilroy too. Let them have representation. I recommend that you vote for map D, and I hope your conscience allows you to.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Rebecca Armanderos, followed by Erin O'Brien, then Jorge Vargas.
Good evening, Rebecca, and I are switching spots. Just want to take a moment, and I won't take the two moments, to speak in support of map D. I think it is clear that the east side is a community of interest, and frankly, it is a community of interest that has been marginalized and not represented in the entire time I have lived down in Gilroy. So this is really an opportunity to give voice, and I think we're hearing clearly that the east side wants a united voice. They want map D, and I think that the message that will be sent tonight if we don't select map D is really problematic, so I urge your support of map D.
Next speaker is Erin O'Brien, I'm sorry, Rebecca Armanderos, followed by Jorge Vargas, our final speaker.
Mayor, council members, Rebecca Armanderos, not Erin O'Brien. We look a lot alike, but we're not the same person. East Side Gilroy is a vibrant, culturally rich community where blue collar, Chicano, and immigrant families have called home for generations, especially those still active or with historical connections to Gilroy's agricultural heritage. We are unequivocally a community of interest, and map F would break it up in violation of the California Voting Rights Act and in absolute contrast to the reasons why district voting was initiated in the first place. Not only does map F break up our community of interest, by doing so, it appears to pack potential Latino voters in its northeast District Six by adding Latino voter-dense areas to the immediate west of Monterey Highway. It also creates a southern, southeastern District Four, which somehow has the densest population of Latino residents of any of its districts at seventy-four percent, but a much lower citizen voting age population at fifty-eight percent than if those voters were represented in a district that kept the east side community of interest whole, potentially disenfranchising the voice of Latino residents. Map D, on the other hand, would keep our community of interest a whole. We are a close-knit community. We share strong family values and cultural ties as well, whether it's our houses of worship, celebrating the shared Mexican heritage and traditions of many of our families, from the Tamal Festival to our carne asadas at San Isidro Park, to the quinceañeras at the I F D E S Hall. We also share the experience of sending our kids to South Valley and Gilroy High School. I would encourage the city council to consider the legal risks of supporting map F, given the issues, but you should do this because it's the right thing to do, not because of the threat of a lawsuit. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And our final speaker is Jorge Vargas.
Hello, everybody. Jorge Vargas here. I wasn't going to speak today, but I felt that I needed to. I did send a Mr. Mayor email last week, and I'm going to go ahead and read it off not only to everybody here, but everybody in the public, and then also add my two cents at the end that I didn't add to my email. So, dear mayor, I've had the opportunity throughout, or I had the opportunity thoroughly to review the drafts. After careful consideration and discussions within friends and family members, the clear preference among us is draft D. What stands out most about draft D is how well it keeps neighborhoods and communities intact. This is essential for fostering unity and pride, especially in historically undeserved and lower-income areas, as a lot of people have already spoken about. Although I live on Orchard Drive, my primary concern is ensuring the neighborhoods surrounding La Sanimas Park and San Isidro Park remain together within the same district. Draft D accomplishes this, strengthening community identity rather than dividing it in general. Notably, it keeps South Valley Middle School and San Isidro Park in the same district, a thoughtful choice considering they are all only one minute's walk, walking apart. The same logic applies to La Sanimas Park, where draft D maintains cohesion within its district. While my focus is on these two parks and their neighboring communities, the strengths of draft D extend to the other districts as well. It reflects a more cohesive and community-centered approach across the entire city. And just to answer a couple of kind of general comments that have been said here, and I don't expect for translation. Yo vine a este país a los cinco años. Yo me creí, o yo tuve la oportunidad de vivir en Salinas, en un bar. en Salinas, en un barrio de bajos recursos, y yo tengo la experiencia de toda mi vida, de 45, 40 años, de que la representación de la comunidad es importante. Y Draft D hace eso.
Thank you. Now's our last speaker. I'm sorry, that was last speaker. That was our final speaker. Okay, thank you, thank you, everybody. Okay, so moving back, Liz, why don't you come back up and...
Closing the public hearing?
Yes, okay, sorry, I'm closing the public hearing officially, thank you. Um, why don't we start with questions? Councilmember Klein, comments?
Yeah, no questions at this point. I, I just want to say, this process has been, uh, four months of intense, and I think great, um, just a lot of discussion by both the public, but also us as a council, um, with our attorney, demographer, and, uh, it was robust, and both in, in this setting, but also in the two public meetings we had, and, and also in, in our closed session, although you can't be a part of that, um, there was a, there was a lot said in the, that really discussed the issues, and I, I just, I know from my, my standpoint in, in dealing with this and confronting it, and something we're doing, it's been robust, and at the end of the day, we've done it, I think we've done a great job, so however this plays out, uh, we can walk away knowing that we did the best job we could together.
Thank you. Councilmember Maris?
I'd just like to echo that, um, and, uh, thank you to everyone. There were a number of people that have spoken tonight, have spoken, um, throughout this process. Um, I know that, um, a lot of us, most of us get, you know, the same email address to all council members, and so we have been reading and reading and reading and reading emails. Some of them have come individually, some of them have come directly to Bryce, and we have them here. Um, and I just am, um, very impressed, you know, not just by how we've handled this and taken this very seriously, but by the, um, community that has, um, expressed, um, strong interest in different maps that have come forth. So, uh, and kudos to all those that took the time. We had 40 maps that were submitted, 40?
I think that sounds right.
Yeah, roughly 40 maps that were, um, people took the time to submit, so, and it was not easy.
Thank you. Councilmember Braco?
Yes, um, I want to thank the community, uh, for all the emails and phone calls and stuff we have received. We got, one thing I noticed is residents of the east side preferred Map F. And, a, a lot of the emails we got were Spanish, and they wanted Map F. I live in the east side, and not only do I live in the east side, my family has been in the east side of Gilroy for over 150 years. So I, I'm tied to that community. Seen it change a lot over the years. When I was in school, I remember they'd say, oh, you're from the other side of the tracks. And there's always been that stigma of the east side of Gilroy. And I like this map because it adds a little bit of Monterey, the other side of Monterey Street onto it, and it splits it up and it gives it a chance to have two representatives instead of one. It's a, almost a third of the city, that I think it's only fair that it be represented by more than one person. Thank you.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yeah, I'd first, uh, like to thank the entire community from all sides of Gilroy to, uh, reach out, uh, to provide their feedback on this process, and, uh, to my fellow council members and mayor, uh, as well, as we go through this process, having prepared for this process by watching other cities, uh, and today even by council making comments to us, we handled it in a way, uh, not just as a council, but as a city, that we should be extremely proud of, because these things don't go like this. Um, and if you talk to any of the professionals, and she's nodding her head over there, um, it's much, much different. And I applaud people on, that have the desire to have one map or the other, and doing it in such a civil and, uh, an amazingly, um, you know, brotherly fashion for the city, I, I'll say. I will echo a little bit of what, uh, what councilmember Braco over here said, which is, when I, when I take a look at it from a, how do you get the most representation standpoint, uh, in, in the city and in the east, east side of the city, having two representatives that can work together in two majority, uh, minority, uh, districts that are coming, it's not like making one of them that's a minority district, a minority minority district, or you couch that. Um, you actually have a chance to have more representation on the council and, uh, to, to bring things forward for the community that you, that you want to have and work together. So, um, I, I, I think there's a, there's a lot of advantage, uh, to have that, as well as, uh, to keep the downtown area kind of together in, in one particular, uh, district, uh, at least the historic downtown area to vie for that, uh, so I just wanted to give that feedback.
Councilmember Marks?
Uh, yes, I want to thank everyone, uh, for presenting tonight. It's given me a lot of food for thought, because I am divided. I'm the one who put D on, and yet F makes a lot of sense to me after reading a lot of the emails about how a lot of the Spanish-speaking people wanted F because it represent, it gave them more representation on the east side. So I don't know, when it comes time to vote, it's, I don't know which way I'm going tonight.
Um, I have a, I have a few comments. I just want to give, um, some feedback. First of all, thank you, everybody who's been here tonight and who's been at, has been a part of this for the past eight meetings. We had a, a legal obligation, I know there's a lot of, a lot of words used in tonight about, uh, legal, we had a legal obligation to do five of these meetings, and we did eight of these meetings, so I appreciate everybody, uh, staying with us for that period of time. Um, I want to give, uh, my experience when it came to, when I first got started doing, doing maps. Um, when I, um, if you didn't get to play around with a mapmaker, um, it's easy to get consumed by making a map, because, um, you become, you become intensely focused on trying to build a jurisdiction or a district, and the moment that you think that you've perfected it, you've imperfected the other district. And that was a challenge, I think, for all of us throughout this map-making process, is that the moment that you think that you're almost at perfection on one, um, the other one's not, so then you, and then, and it takes it out of contention, so then you have to start moving and reconsidering and talking to people about seeing what they want in this community. So, um, I also want to echo what Mr. Donovan said earlier, appreciate your words, because, um, this is not a very easy process, this is new to all of us. And what Mr. Donovan was saying is that, you know, regardless of what happens today, I think, I'm going to use some of your words here, sir, but regardless of what happens today, uh, we are going to have districts, um, here in a very short time, and, um, this is something that I know that some people in this community, um, didn't think was possible for a very long time. So, um, please, please keep that in mind, and that, um, as Mr. Donovan said, and, and if we have sort of joked about before, that in a very short time, we are going to be doing this again, and it's going to be based on a lot of new census data coming up in 2030, so, you know, this is, this is our chance to do the very best we can. But as I said earlier, when you try to build a district and you think it's perfect, the other ones are not. And so when this finishes tonight, um, it will be imperfect. So I just want to leave you with those comments. And, um, any other comments? So the first thing that we have, sorry, the first thing that we need to do as a council is to select, um, Map D or Map F. And I'm looking for anybody for a motion.
I'll throw it out there, I'll make a motion to accept Map F.
So I have a, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by councilmember Klein, and a second by councilmember Fugazi to select Map F as the official district map. Uh, roll call, please. Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo? Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, thank you, everybody, for, uh, working through that. The next thing that we need to do is determine which of the districts in Map F, uh, will go first. And let's just go quickly back to, um, Liz to hear a little bit more about, uh, districting. Please.
Yeah, so sequencing, um, I believe we have in our agenda posted online, evens are up in 2026 and odds are up in 2028. Um, but you do get to renumber the, uh, districts, um, so if you would like to consider things like, um, potentially where you are on the map, or, um, ensuring that certain areas that are underrepresented go up first, um, these are sort of the things that we can consider, um, when selecting our sequencing. So if there are naturally three districts that would go up in 2026, um, let us know because I, uh, do not know where you guys place.
So I'll start on the right this time, by councilmember Braco.
Well, I, we got, number four has no one right now, number six, I'm up, and I believe number five, representatives in that area are up, so I would just say four, five, and six. I'll make that a motion.
I'd second that.
Okay, let me, I would, I would like to explain what you just said to the public, if you don't mind. So, uh, councilmember Braco, um, his motion is that he's suggesting that if you look at the map here, that the, the zone six and the zone four, which are the two districts of the east side, he believes that, um, those should, those should be two of the three that should be up in 2026. They should go first, right? And the reason why he said that he lives there, he lives in number six, so basically, he's an incumbent, he's up for election in 2026, so he can either elect to run against somebody, um, from zone six, because that's the, the zone that he lives in. Did I get that correct? Correct so far? Okay. And, and in zone five, when he said the others are up, that means that, um, councilmember Klein and councilmember Marks live in the same district, and now that we've chosen Map F, that District Five, that they, if they decide to run for election in 2026, they have to run against each other. So I believe this is why he's saying this is the most fair way to do it. Okay, so...
And then number four is empty.
And four is empty, so there will be a new, a new councilmember, uh, for sure, coming from District Four, and I, I want to add, in District Five, if they run against each other, of course, um, anybody else who lives in District Five can run against them as well.
What, what it also does is brings it to the forefront of 26, um, where you, you get that election to happen on those three districts.
Yes.
And I think that that's the imperative part of this process, is to allow that, that to happen sooner than later, and this allows that.
Okay. So any, so we do have a, we do have a motion by councilmember Braco, and a second by councilmember Fugazi, I think I had that right, that, um, Districts Four, Five, and Six will be the first to go in 2026. Did I get that wording correct?
That's, that's right.
Okay, so, roll call, please. Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo? Yes. Okay, now we're going to move on to the third item of consideration, and why don't you take it from there?
Oh, I believe I'll turn that over to the city attorney. I think that's residency requirement?
Uh, yes, just briefly, that's a question of whether councilmembers who want to be elected in a district need to live in that district for some period of time prior to the election. There are cases on this, and there's actually law...
Okay.
There's law in California that says the city can require, uh, a, a councilmember to live in the district prior to filing nomination papers, however, only for a maximum of 30 days. So in front of you is a decision about whether you want to require that somebody in order to run in a district be a resident of that district prior to the time they fill out their nominating papers for between zero and 30 days. Right now, with councilmembers elected at large, there is no residency requirement. The charter only requires that councilmembers be residents and electors of the city of Gilroy when they fill out their nominating papers. But you can require for these districts anything between zero and 30 days.
Andy?
Yes.
Now, it just says, what, somebody just says, I live here? Or do they have to show that they live there? By a utility bill or driver's license or something?
Initially, the way these things work, we haven't had that issue in Gilroy, but other cities have, and, uh, if it's challenged, then, uh, there can be a court case about residency, where people have to prove residency by whatever means appropriate, including the kinds of things you talked about.
That would be from another candidate pushing it, right?
That could happen. That, that has happened in other cities, certainly.
Okay.
But that's no different than now, correct?
Yeah, that, it is no different than now, that's correct. Except that it's district-wide instead of city-wide.
Sure.
Or would be.
So Andy, why wouldn't the, uh, city clerk ask for proof of residency? Because it just seems to me like we've gone through this districting, so you had proper people, uh, or people living in the community of interest, and now it seems like it doesn't matter? You know, someone could, could just...
No, that's not true, that's, that's not true.
No, I, I think the city clerk would ask for proof of residency.
Oh, they would.
They would, they would.
They would, okay.
But these things can be challenged.
They do now.
Okay.
They do now, and they will then.
Well, no, from what Andy was saying, it was like it had to be challenged by another person.
No, no, no.
But no, it could be, but, but the city clerk. Suppose the city clerk noticed that the person was not part of the, that district, would he or she deny the person for running?
The process is going to, the process is going to be no different than now.
But he's saying that could happen?
Well, it could.
Would, yeah, but I want to hear it will happen.
Uh, councilmember Marks, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm going to help, because I thought we already said it, so I'm, I just want to reiterate. It's no different than it is now, right? If, when we put in our papers to run at large, right? We, we could be challenged at that point by any member of the community, right? If someone's challenging that we don't live in Gilroy, they can challenge it, and nothing is going to change when we go to districts, nothing. That's what you're saying.
Right, except the residency will be by district instead of at large.
Of course, of course, but the process is the same.
The process would be the same, yes.
Okay, so, okay, so if, what about, um, could it be a citizen that would challenge it instead of a candidate?
That, again, that has, that has happened elsewhere, yes.
All right, okay. It's just when you say, I could, it makes it really ambiguous.
I think in the sense, in, in the sake of keeping things normal as far as continuous, I, I don't see the need to go to, say, 30 days. I, I think it's been this way in our charter, and it's worked, so to me, I think, leave it alone the way it is. That's just my thought, you, you can...
I agree.
No, it's not 30 days.
I have a preference for 30 days.
You have a, a filing deadline.
There is not one.
Yeah, it's your filing deadline, basically, to, to file for and get, and get qualified. But it has nothing to do with residence. So I'm good with, with keeping it the way it is.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yeah, I would, I would make a motion right now to put it to 30 days, uh, as is the maximum by law.
I would second it.
Okay, so I have a motion, and a second, that the resident, residency requirement is 30 days. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, do you need a roll call?
We should do a roll call again, yes. It'd be better.
Sorry, roll call. Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
No.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo? No. Motion passes five to two. Okay. Did I get that right?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, so, a little bit more business here.
So that really completes the substantive part, however, now, the, it's in order to have a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading, and the ordinance would be redrafted from the one that is in the packet slightly to encompass what, what the, uh, the tentative votes that you've just taken.
Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading.
A motion?
I'll second.
Sorry, I think I have a motion from councilmember Klein, and a second by councilmember Ramirez. Sorry, I think I have a motion from Councilmember Klein and a second by Councilmember Ramirez to motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero.
So now the clerk should read the ordinance by title only, as he's just been authorized to do?
Yes, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Gilroy to establish the election of members of the city council by six districts. Establish the boundaries, identification numbers, and the election order of each district. Establish a residency requirement to seek a council seat from each district and related actions.
I will entertain a motion that was just read by the city clerk.
And for the record, that would be to introduce the ordinance with the specifications that the council has just voted on.
A motion?
I have a motion by Councilmember Fugazi and a second by Councilmember Klein. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Pardon me? Okay, I am going to call for a 15-minute break. Thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody, or the few remaining, for coming back from the break. And we are going to move right on backwards to public hearing, item number 8.1. Public hearing pursuant to government code section 3502.3, AB 2561, to receive a report on city of Gilroy vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts. Leanne, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. I don't understand why the audience really thinned out right before my presentation. I won't take it personal, I guess. So tonight is a presentation, it's a public hearing on implementing AB 2561, which is a new requirement that we have to comply with. So I'm going to walk you through that and then talk to you about what our current vacancy rates are, and then I can talk to you a little bit about recruitment and retention efforts and take any questions that you might have. So what is AB 2561? This is a California Assembly Bill that passed in 2024, and it became effective on January 1st, 2025. And it's a part of the Myers-Millias-Brown Act, which is the act that governs our employee relations and labor relations processes that we have with our employee groups. And this requires us to hold a public hearing regarding position vacancies before we adopt a budget. So that's why this is on tonight's agenda, because we have budget adoption scheduled for June 2nd, and so the plan is to do this tonight, so it happens before you adopt the budget. So we have to report on the status of vacancies by bargaining unit. We have to provide information on our recruitment and retention efforts, and we have to talk about any obstacles or challenges that we have in our hiring process. Then there are additional obligations that the law adds on to the reporting if the vacancy rate in a bargaining unit exceeds 20%. And fortunately, none of our vacancy rates reach that level. So we don't have to do the additional reporting. So what are Gilroy's bargaining groups? And most of these you're familiar with, but for the public. We have our employees broken down into five groups. Four of them are formal recognized bargaining units, ASME Local 101, our Gilroy Police Officers' Association, our Gilroy Management Association, and IAAF Gilroy Firefighters Local 2805. And then every full-time employee that's not in one of those groups is in the unrepresented group. And that could be appointed positions, department heads, or confidential employees. So that's how our employees are organized across the different employee groups. So what is our vacancy rate by bargaining group? So you can see up on the chart that we have 291 full-time positions, we have 29 vacancies, so our overall vacancy rate is about 10%, or it is 10%. And then the vacancies by bargaining group is broken out. We have different vacancies within each unit. And in the staff report that was provided to you and in your packets that you received, I went into details about each of the vacancies that we have, and I'm happy to discuss those if you would like to. But these are the number of vacancies we have currently in each bargaining unit, and we're working on all of our different recruitment processes right now. We have candidates in different phases of hiring processes for most every opening that we have. So this is dynamic, this is changing all the time. This is a snapshot in time when we were preparing this report. So probably there's even, there's a couple changes I can think of that even have happened since this report was written, that we've moved on to offers to candidates for positions. And then also some turnover data, this is 2024, so calendar year 2024. This is the turnover that we experienced here in the city. We had eight retirements, seven voluntary resignations, and then five involuntary resignations, which would be like a release from probation, a termination, or someone who resigns in lieu of being released from probation or being terminated. So there were 20 positions that turned over, and then it's, you know, broken out by group here. And if anyone has any questions as I'm talking, feel free to ask. And then we are, in the reporting, we're to go over recruitment and retention efforts. So we wanted to touch on a few of these items so that you are aware of the different recruitment and retention efforts that we go through here in the city. And I have to give a little shout out to my team in human resources. We're a small and mighty team, but everyone on the team pitches in and works on recruitments in some way, shape, or form. And we wouldn't be able to move forward with all the hiring and all the introductions of new employees that you see from time to time at your meetings, all the promotions and things that we announce and bring forward. Those wouldn't happen without the efforts of everyone on the team, and actually, everyone on city staff, because every manager and supervisor in the operating departments are working on recruitment and making it a high priority to get vacant positions filled. So a few things to touch on, easy application process and improved candidate experience. So we use an online platform called NeoGov Insight. It makes it really easy for candidates to apply for jobs. It keeps track of every single recruitment, every step, every phase of the process. Makes it super easy to have 30 or 40 recruitments going at any one time. We can look and see exactly where every candidate is in the process and what notifications have been sent to them, what reminders we send out for interviews, any step of the process. It's organized and cataloged in this online platform that we utilize. And it's very flexible, allows us to post the recruitment process, you know, have different interview questions, or not interview questions, but application pre-screening questions, and it just makes the hiring process really easy. And then just trying to have a great candidate experience. Every candidate that applies for a job with the city of Gilroy gets a response. Might not be a "you've got the job" response, because typically only one person gets the job, and we might have a number of applications for a job. But every candidate gets a response and knows the status of where they are in the recruitment process. And so that happens through this platform. We also try to really make a very open and positive process. We do, like in the police department and fire department, there's sit-alongs and ride-alongs and ways that people can learn about a job so that they know what they're getting into when they come through the hiring process. We've also had the ability to reduce a lot of our recruitment timelines, and that's facilitated by, not only by the online process, but by really evaluating each recruitment. There's some recruitments that are very popular, and we can post it for only five or seven days, and we'll have 100 applications. So for those recruitments, we don't leave it posted any longer than that, so we're trying to look for ways to shorten up the timeline of our recruitment processes when we know we're going to have a large candidate pool. So we've been able to save a lot of time in the hiring process by shortening that posting period up. And then we use a lot of different avenues for testing, and we've eliminated a lot of written tests for positions in lieu of practical tests and interview questions, and have allowed candidates to take certain exams at colleges or other locations, and they can submit their test results with their application so they don't have to show up on a particular day at a particular time to take a test. We also have an expedited rehire process. Right now, we're hiring for summer camp programs, and many of our applicants are coming back from prior summer. So we have an expedited hiring process to bring those candidates on quickly and get them back into the queue for those hiring needs that we have. We have a review of the job description before we commence the recruitment, to make sure we're focusing on the right things, and the managers really help us with that. And then we have them fill out a very simple, easy-to-fill-out recruitment request form, which gives us all the information at one time on one form, so we can quickly move to posting a position for recruitment. So we're not hunting around for information or details, we get it all at once from the hiring manager. We do a lot of outreach and advertising for positions. The most popular way people find out about our jobs, believe it or not, is our City of Gilroy website, and also the social media posts that we put out to the community about our open jobs. Our communication and engagement folks really do a great job of posting our positions. And then NeoGov Insight, the system we use, is tied to governmentjobs.com, and that is, you know, one of the other most popular ways that people find out about our jobs. Because if they're looking for a job in local government, they tend to go to this particular site because they know all the cities use this platform. We also recently implemented an employee referral program. We recently provided some, over this last about 18 months, about 12 of our employees received referral bonuses for referring candidates that we hired, and if they get $500 if we hired the candidate that they referred, and then they get another $500 if that candidate passes probation. So that's been a very positive and successful program, and our employees are really great ambassadors of the city and really focus on getting, recommending people who they would want to work with, who are good, solid people that would be great for the job. And so that's been very helpful to us in our hiring. Occasionally, we use search forms. I won't go into the details of that, but occasionally for high-level positions or hard-to-fill positions, we use search forms. And then, as you know, through our collective bargaining process, that's where we address wages, hours, and working conditions, and so we try to stay as competitive as we can afford and as possible, so we can attract and retain high-quality employees. And then all of us, as employees of the city, managers of the city, focus on having a positive work environment and a positive employee culture. And believe it or not, the reputation of Gilroy and what it's like to work here is one of the positive things that we hear a lot from applicants. I've heard so many good things about working for the city of Gilroy that I want to be a part of this organization, I want to come to work here. And maybe this young man sitting in the front row here who's observing tonight's council meeting, he'll nod his head that he wanted to come work here. And so he's new to our team and is enjoying his position and had heard great things about working here and wanted to come join the team. And lastly, we're trying to develop programs that help to build our bench, whether it's our college summer intern program or our part-time police cadet program. We have different programs in place to try to get people ready to be candidates for jobs. We're finding that we have to do that more, we have to build our own bench so that we get good candidates for positions and, you know, just really help guide them and steer them to positions. We sometimes attend job fairs and events at the different high schools and the community college to make, help folks realize that there are really good careers in local government, and sometimes folks don't think about working for their city, but it really is a rewarding career. I can speak for that myself. The work is rewarding, you really feel like you're doing something special and making a difference in your community, and that really appeals to a lot of people. So it's a continuous effort, we're continuing to work on it. We do have some challenges with high-level positions and highly technical positions, the applicant pools are much smaller, but no different than any other city. I talk to the HR directors in other cities constantly, and they will tell you that they have the same challenges in filling certain technical positions, and so those ones just take a little bit more time and care to find the right person for the position. So those are some of the things that we are doing. Tonight's report is a state mandate, so we are complying with that by holding tonight's hearing. And then the recommended action is for you to receive the report and conduct the public hearing. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Otherwise, you should take public comment in the public hearing.
Questions for Leanne? Okay, we'll go to public comment.
No speakers for this item.
Okay, last chance for questions for Leanne. Okay, so we're not looking for a motion or anything, it was just direction.
Received the report.
We've received it, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to 9.1? Okay. Moving on to unfinished business, 9.1, strategic planning session number four, council legislative agenda, public safety, and the unhoused staff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to do this from here so I can write, but I don't have a lot of slides, and so we are down to probably the last three topics that we would like some council input and direction for concerning your strategic planning process. The first topic that we will have tonight is the unhoused. We did not get a lot of comments about this, but this was a subject matter that the council wanted to continue to talk about. So I will show you those notes, and there were three basic concepts about our unhoused community. And the first was the disproportionate population amount, given Gilroy's size in comparison to other cities in the county, and given our size of the unhoused population, working with outside agencies, the unhoused services, and part of that was policy direction to staff, and then an equal application of law, and I think that considered crime in vehicles. So I'll pause there and take feedback from the council about anything you may want to discuss concerning this topic.
Councilmember Fugazi?
How do you see, there's a great deal of push from the state and certainly in other local cities in terms of the requirement of the unhoused to take services or have some form of consequences, and then also with Proposition 1 and these things. How do you see any of that fitting into Gilroy? I know, obviously, it's our decision to do those things, but as far as execution and whatnot?
Yes, Mr. Fugazi, you've seen in many cities now that they're passing ordinances and, you know, laws exactly of that type, that if folks, after certain numbers of times, decide that they don't want to accept services, that there is some consequences to that. So that could be a policy direction from the council. The city of San Jose, which you're probably familiar with, has done, attempted to start doing things like that. So there are models out there in different variable degrees of what the council would expect for Gilroy.
I mean, I don't know that there's any direct direction from me towards one way or the other, but I think it would be a good idea to have on the work plan some way of seeing how that can make sense and what those processes would be, especially in light of any new facilities coming, you know, onboard where it would be an alternative for people to go to, or part of the process of not complying with moving out of certain public spaces or what it may be to then move them to some of these other facilities. I know that is a big push that's going on right now, and I'd like to make sure that we are looking at it, studying it, and understanding what our options are.
Councilmember Ramirez?
So I know that in very recent, you even sent an email out about something being proposed being built in Gilroy. I know it's probably too early to ask questions about that because we don't have the information yet, but I think that moving forward, it's, you know, I anticipate that you will keep us abreast of the movement on that and the impacts and the implications that will come, because I think as we move, if we do move in that direction, we need to have some kind of a say in that and, you know, determine what kind of impacts that might have and either support it or, you know, somehow be involved in that process.
And by for our slice of the county services that, you know, especially since we're so disproportionate, that we can have, whether it be, yeah, we now are working to, if we're going to have somebody who is noncompliant, that there is a facility that is coming online in Santa Clara County but up north, and that we can find places for, I think I mentioned it in our first session that we had, which is, we have to understand that there are different needs for different people, and often we've put the housing thing, which is important, as the only thing, and we have to be prepared to find other ways to help some of the people who don't want that as an option.
Go ahead.
Jimmy, what about the governor? He came out and said, "Get rid of him." That's basically what he said. So what do we think about that?
I would say there is a big push from Sacramento. I also think that there's been a lot of I also think that there's been a lot of money distributed from the state for these programs. And so that's something that we, as a city of Gilroy, need to consider if we want to really get that money and utilize it here. There are pros and cons, but I really couldn't say, you know, much about, you know, the governor saying, "Get rid of them." I think what the message is, is work harder to connect them to services. Work harder to, the voters have voted for billions of dollars of programs in this state, and in many levels, they're really being underutilized. And so I think that's the message I would take away, is that we all have to work harder to try to connect these folks and have tools to do so. We did have some movement in legislature about conservatorship, things like that, but that's not an easy process. But I think what the governor's advocating for is to use every tool that you have out there and do something.
Yeah, I see that the same way, and Governor, or sorry, and Mayor Mahend as well. And San Jose is taking some pretty drastic things as well, looking at this, but it is about giving services to some of those really, really severe people who are in the throes of bad dependence or mental health issues, that it's not just, "Hey, you got to get rid of them," but it's, "Let's find a place for those particular people." And everybody else, yeah, you can't be there if we've got a place for you to go. And a lot of places, you just can't be there.
I would just say, you know, as we go down that road, you look at the successes, but you can see the failures. We see in the big cities, the failures where billions and billions of dollars have just been wasted. And there's got to be that accountability, not just for the person that we're dealing with, but the accountability with us as a city and what we're doing with that issue. So it's important to have accountability at every level. I think that's moving forward, one of the big things that I look at for this.
And I think it's important that we continue to have a seat at the table when these decisions are being made, especially given the disproportionate number that we have here, that, you know, we advocate for the dollars necessary. But I think that we also, given that we're dealing with most of these unhoused, we need to be on whatever regional table there is where these issues are being discussed and where the money is being distributed.
Are numbers justified, Denise?
Yes.
Well, sadly, there is also somewhat of a little bit of a turf war, so to speak, out there between people who are housing first and all of the money that's going into that versus pulling certain people off the street and putting them into other types of care. And so, you know, I think that that tide is turning quite a bit.
Yes.
And we need to be there so that when those opportunities arise for us to grab money or to use some of the services, that we're ready to help take that on for some of these people.
What I would like to see is that this council give specific direction. We have really a lot of good suggestions already, but they're kind of out there and ambiguous. I'd like to see us sit down and discuss what should be done first, second, third. You know, San Jose seems to have really put a lot of things in place, and I would like to see us do the same. And sooner rather than later.
But we're not getting specifics tonight.
No, we're not. No, this is for a future agenda item that hopefully...
So I would like, Councilmember Hilton?
I'll comment as well. There's nothing that's been said here tonight that I don't agree with. I really want to focus in on what a few of you have already said, and that is a regional approach. I do believe that our city staff could serve our unhoused better and Gilroy better by having a seat at the table, right? So we can determine, you know, what's best for Gilroy, and at the same time, maybe have a unified voice for down here in South County. So we get both. So that's what I would like to see go into our work plan and our legislative action is what you guys have already said with that regional approach. Further comments on unhoused? Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'll move on to public safety. And that discussion had seven bullets that we wrote down, public safety, law and order, adequate police staffing. With that, you also talk about service levels, recruitment staffing, crime data, fireworks, development practices, and basic public safety services. So hopefully, this triggers your memory back from February about these concerns or things you wanted to talk about.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ramirez.
Okay. So a number of us were on the campaign trail. We heard loud and clear that public safety is an issue. We had a tax measure on the ballot that failed, but given the amount of time and the amount of energy, putting it out there and marketing it, I think that with over 60% of the voters voting in favor of it, that's a litmus test that tells me that we need to focus on public safety. We've had a third-party report with Lafco, speaking about the needs on the fire side. I don't know if we need a third-party needs assessment on the police side. I was shocked to find out that one had not been done prior to the tax being put on the ballot. But I believe that we need to make sure that we move towards enhancing our staff and making sure that we are providing competitive wages so that we can not only attract but retain the best of the best in public safety. I think we owe it to this community, and we owe it to our public safety officers who are working for us.
I too was somewhat confused after getting the budget, as well as hearing from the chief, and also being involved in some of the meetings for the tax increase. And so the confusion for me lies in that, in order to go out to say to the community that we need to have a tax increase, whether you're from 2805 Fire or from the POA, to me, it means that you believe that you are understaffed and that the city has told you the only way for you to get more staff is to find more money. And the only way to get more money is going to be through this tax. And then to hear the other side, which is, "We don't know if we need more people," this is from the last meeting, which I wasn't in attendance, I washed it back, "we don't know if we need more people because of BEAT system and a bunch of arcane stuff that I don't exactly understand." So those things don't all line up for me because it, to me, means that either the police officers and the firefighters that were vying for this, I even went to a meeting where the captain was giving a presentation, you know, of why this is important. So either they didn't get it right, or the chief has got a different story. It just seems everything doesn't quite line up. And so I think that it is a good idea. I don't know how, I'm new and I don't know how this stuff works, but yes, a third-party way of understanding what our service levels are, what these, how these BEATs line up, or whatever it may be, and any way that we can have that understanding as we go forward certainly helps steer us in the direction, which is not just our gut. I mean, all of us can listen to people in the community and say, "We need more of this or we need more of that." But the reality is, that's just a gut feeling. And I would have thought, too, that we would have done that before we went to do it for tax, but no, it's not the case. So anyway, yeah, I would support that, Hilton.
Okay. Well said, both of you.
All right. Lastly, is your legislative agenda. And I put on here the legislative agenda from fiscal year '24 and '25. And essentially, what the legislative agenda is, we adopt it in the two-year budget cycle, and it identifies policies or types of programs. Typically, programs, if the council approves, we'll put those in our work plan. But policies, we tend to leave on the legislative agenda, and that will save you from having to do a fair memo. And say, for instance, you want to do something, you know, let's say you're going to ban something in town. You just don't want to have it anymore. Instead of having to do a fair memo, you can put it on the legislative agenda, and we'll essentially do that fair memo for you. We'll put it through the process of getting on a council agenda, but it simplifies that for everyone. And, or it'll be included on a work plan if it's a program. Council members recommend items for the legislative agenda, staff does not. But then council, with the vote of four of you, need to direct us to include them on the legislative agenda that you approve on June 2nd. So if you don't have enough information or you're not too sure about what's being asked, we can do that and make that clear when we return on the 2nd. So in previous years, many of these ended up in our housing element or in other policies in the department. But you can see some of the items that council, two years ago, said, "We would like this to be on our legislative agenda." Safe parking policy is one that we did bring to council. So most of this stuff has been addressed. Plan for a community youth center. We're doing the civic center master plan. Review the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So these are things that you've seen, for those of you who have been here the last two years, come through on your agenda or been resolved in some other manner. So these are just examples, but again, we as staff look for you to tell us what you would like to include on that agenda.
So Jimmy?
Just a quick question. You gave an example of a policy. Can you give an example of a program, like from even up here?
Well, I'm trying to look here. Okay, so...
Or even just come up with something.
I'm sorry, I'm really stuck.
Okay. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
You know, any program, let's say you want to provide a service to the community, or you want to start a, you know, how about this one? An adopt-a-spot program in town to pick up garbage. That's some of those things that, you know, don't really fit in some areas and put on the legislative agenda, and then we can put that on our work plan. But really, if you look at what we have here, like, explore transit-first policy. That was Councilmember Hilton a couple of years ago. It's just something, you know, that is out there as a policy. He wanted the rest of the council to look at and consider.
So then, things that we have talked about already, that we have approved in terms of giving direction to council, do those need to be on here then? For example, what comes to mind to me when you said "program," and I just could be way off, is we've asked to look at bringing back the swim program. So would that be kind of on that, or is that, no, we've already gotten direction from you, we're already working on it, doesn't need to be on here?
You're right. We already have direction. We're returning in a future meeting to do that, so that would not be something that you would advocate. But one thing that was mentioned a while ago was like the reserve policy and infrastructure or things like that. That could be a program or a policy you'd want to evaluate. You know, like I said, safe parking policy, I'll give you an example of how that one worked. There was a desire to have safe parking for the unhoused, for RVs and vehicles, and we did go through that process. We did do an RFP for it, but did not identify a suitable vendor who could provide a space. So we did do that. We did explore it. So that's a policy and a program, but it just never came to fruition. But we did go through the process.
Thank you.
So I don't know if you want me to go down all of these all at once and we go through them one by one, or how do you want to go about that? Because I have a number of things. So you just may hit on each one as I go, or you want to go round robin, or what do you want to do?
I have multiple also, so I would say, I don't want to throw all mine out at once either. I don't think you should either. I think you should do it one by one.
Yeah, I think so, too. So the first thing I'd like to bring up, actually, is a rewind to the budget meeting that you guys had since I wasn't there and wanted to bring up, because some of it came to light even subsequent to that with the meeting that we had recently, is considering how we're going to pay for what has been described as a need for more code enforcement officers for the city. And that was brought up in the last meeting. I think Mayor brought that up at that time. In looking at the budget and looking at the headcount that was going out, there's three headcount that's going into recreation. And in looking at the funding, it appears that there's like a million five that we identified that basically gets transferred from general fund into the recreation department. Is that, that's correct, right? And so what I wanted to propose and see what my colleagues thought about this is that rather than, and just so you know, for those that don't know, the recreation department ran about a $400,000 surplus for the last couple of years after getting the $1.5 million. So, and there's a fund as well that's still there. So I was thinking, we reduce that number down to $1 million, or $1.1 million, or something close to that. And we take those funds, and Jimmy, you identify for us what you think is the adequate level of code enforcement officers that we need in the city, given now that you know kind of how this council is really active for the gateways and for beautification and all of these things that we need to do. And then see about transferring, if it's one headcount or two headcount into code enforcement. And then the second thing to do with that would be to set aside some of those funds for when we have the economic development director come on board, that we can just kind of put aside in case in that department, we find that we'll need another headcount in that particular department. We have those funds readily available to fill that without having to worry about it. So that's what I was proposing to the rest of you and obviously to Jimmy, and appreciate the discussion.
Just a clarifying question. This is to work on over the next two years, not in two weeks?
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought the same thing.
Yeah, I was just making sure.
It felt like a budget.
They're going to pitch this in two weeks.
For the budget in two weeks. That's what I thought, too. So that's...
For this budget coming up, to make that change.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
But that's not what this is for.
Correct. But I'm saying, we had that discussion last week, and so what I'm doing right now is raising this as discussion point for when we ultimately make that, that Jimmy could go back and make the changes necessary to make that happen.
So how about this, right? So as he said, you started off with that sentence was, "Consider how to pay for more code enforcement." So if we get to that point and we have funds for more code enforcement, that's what you're saying?
Right.
Correct? That then, we need to get on the legislative agenda. What are we doing with it?
Correct. Yes, yes. All I'm saying is, is that with it running previously at a $400,000 surplus, right, that those funds are available to us if we didn't shift them into the recreation fund. And in light of what you said, and what I think many of us believe in needing more code enforcement officers, and even Jimmy, or, sorry, Mr. Forbes, said that this is something that we could use in the city, I'm, it's basically saying, yes, recreation is important, but driving top-line revenue and getting our city in a point that we can earn more on the top line means more recreation, and there's a $3 million fund that's there for them to do great things like pickleball courts with anyway. That's where I'm going with it.
Okay. Sounds good. Any...
Yeah, I think I need to clarify because what we are talking about is a policy and a program to do for the next two years. If that, if you want to have that conversation, that's what we should have on the 2nd. And the opportunity to do that allows you to either adopt a budget that can put that aside for the moment. And let's say the council says, "We don't want to send $1.5 million over to recreation. We want to send $1.1." That will take us some time. And we also have impacts and, let's say, administrative things we need to do to implement that. So to get that approved, I think, for the July 1 budget will be a challenge, because I think it'll take considerable council discussion about what you want to do with the recreation department. I just think that's going to be hard to do in the next two weeks.
I don't, I mean, I just didn't exactly understand, because it does apply to the legislative agenda to some degree. I don't understand if we already were spending the money and we were already in surplus and we're already running a surplus into there, how much administrative work is it taking? Because it's not money that's necessary even to run the department. So it's not as if you're going to have to reduce the department headcount or anything of that nature, right?
But what I mean administrative, I also mean legislative, because we have a direction, we have a resolution from council to say we're moving $1.5 million into the recreation fund. And money that is created above and beyond that is for growing the recreation department. So if that is a policy decision of the council to change that, I think that is, that's something that you will have to decide as a group, if that's what you want to do.
So we could put a fair memo in and get that into...
I would say, the point of this is to bypass the fair memo. It's to give a very quick, quick throw out and try to get a majority to put something on the legislative agenda that we'll adopt on June 2nd and then work on it over the next two years. I think that's what you're trying to get at, is that's where this will jump. If for some reason you don't get a majority here, then yeah, you would have to write a fair memo, but this is bypassing the fair memo process.
What I'm trying to say is, is that in this budget that we are about to pass...
I don't, I think you're out of time.
Really?
Yeah, to get it done. Yeah, to get it done. That, that's what my guest don't want me from being through this many times.
But as I said, we could write a fair, I could write a fair memo, and bring it to council, right? And then vote specifically on this in terms of reassigning the funds from one account to another account. That happens all the time. I mean...
Yes, you can, but I think what, I'm learning her too, but I think what you want, right, as we look forward the next year or two, hopefully sooner than two years, but what you want is to look at more, ways to do more code enforcement. How to use code enforcement better.
Correct.
You said that. And you also want to be able to have some flexibility with economic development.
Correct.
I recommend that you leave it at that. That goes on the legislative agenda. Then you still need to work on legislating with the rest of council in the next two weeks to get to some of those financial ideas that you have. I think they need to be kept separate.
Okay.
I get that right?
Yeah.
So stick with your, consider how to pay for more code enforcement, and diversity, and economic development, just with this item. And then on, come on June 2nd, we'll figure out, you'll, you'll need to legislate with us on how to get the funds to do that.
But you can't, you can't write a memo, you can't write a memo before that, but what you could do is lobby us for it. A fair memo takes, the process takes too long. You would have to meet with them to even get it on the June 2 agenda, and then it'd be at the end of the meeting. So it's too late. So what he's trying to say is start hustling now, to try to, to try to figure out the numbers wise, and explain it to people without violating the Brown Act. Explain it to us, and explains that what you want to do, and pitch it that night. But, but I, I want to listen to what you want to get through, and but like work on it over the next two years, like get it on the agenda, and be like, hit, you know...
Two weeks?
No, two years.
Three years?
Oh, so you're saying, okay.
The only, you know, the only dilemma is that you're, you know, you're going to open up positions according to this budget, or you won't. I mean, that's what I'm, Jimmy, that's what I'm trying to understand. So when this budget passes, and you have three requisitions that are approved in this budget, you now can open up those three requisitions and start spending against those, correct?
That is correct, if there is a vote of four council members. If there is not a vote of four, then I cannot. And so that would be up to the council at that time, on June 2nd, to discuss that. That's what I recommended, and I would answer your questions.
I'm sorry, I'm, so what I'm asking is, is that when you say to have four council members, say that they don't want those three to be, you're saying to basically vote against the budget in, in total?
No, not in total. You could do a line item veto, basically.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
You could pull out a, and I know, and let's be, let's clear this up, because this is very important. You're looking at a $200 million budget. We don't want to hold the rest of that budget up.
I agree.
Because there are just some things council's not ready to approve yet, and that's totally acceptable, and totally reasonable. And if the rest of the council says, "We're going to vote for this budget except for X, Y, and Z."
Okay.
We got plenty of time.
Now I understand much better.
Good.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a clarifying question though? Last meeting, you asked for an additional code enforcement officer. So is that, and we all gave ourselves that, so is this, did you take that back, Jimmy? And then will the proposed budget that we've been looking at reflect one, not just the one you're backfilling, but then one more?
So every...
Or, or have you not made those adjustments yet?
What we will do on the 2nd is we will do the report backs. And I've written down everything and put a star here for things I believe that you want to hear more about. And so what the mayor asked is, I want to add another code enforcement officer. And I will bring you some options, and say, "This is how you can do it, this is how we can do it," but it's going to come from somewhere else.
A, B, and C.
A, B, and C. And then if there's support from the council to approve that, that gets adopted that night as part of the budget. If it doesn't, it dies.
And I would just pitch on a procedural thing. That's, that's why all that conversation happened last Monday, because that's what the public knew we were here. They knew we were here discussing the budget specifically. Tonight, they think we're just working on a future agenda work plan. They don't assume that we're even talking about what's about to be adopted on June 2nd. That's the only reason why I was trying to really get you to separate that too.
Okay, so should we be clear? We got, we have his ideas for legislative agenda, correct? For, consider how to, consider how to, you know, more code enforcement?
Well, I, I think I will shoot myself a little bit and say, especially with what Zach has said, it's a little out of turn, because I'm talking about some of the budget things, rather than the legislative agenda things. And so given what Jimmy basically just brought forward, which is, on June 2nd, come together and say, "Yeah, the budget's great, but, you know, there's four of us that basically want to pull this or change that." And that's how we get it done, and I'm good, and I'll yield my time to...
No, no, but I still, but I still think that you should, I still think you should throw yourself a pitch, and get what you want to get into the legislative agenda for the future. Because if, if it fails on June 2nd, you're going to be kind of lost. You're either going to have to do your own fair memo, or if we get it in there now, you know, you can talk about it then as well. Or maybe even refine what might happen on June 2nd.
Let me try to, to help as well. What you could do is, you could on June 2nd, try to garner support for the ideas that you have. For now, you could look at policies. And one of the policies the council has is a resolution to transfer 1.5 million over to the recreation fund. If that is of interest to you, put that on the list, and that'll be on my work plan.
There you go.
Okay.
That's what I want.
You got it.
Jimmy, I've, oh, go ahead. Did you want to get someone else?
Do you want to go next? Councilmember Hilton was, go ahead, go ahead.
All right, Jimmy, I have a question. The downtown committee, do we need to put those two proposed ordinances on the legislative agenda?
No, they are part of the community development work plan, and they will be listed on the community development work plan going forward.
And when will it come before council?
That will be determined when you see the work plan, and the, the vote of the rest of the council, depending on priority.
Okay, because I thought we were all told it was going to happen in this fiscal year, fourth quarter. Doesn't look like it.
I, I don't know where we're at with that.
Could you find out, please? Because those ordinances have been proposed back in January of 2024, and now I'm being told that it's being pushed back again. And this is with our downtown and our economic development.
Any other, you looking for legislative agenda items?
I would like to see them on, I'd like to see them done. You know, we waited too long.
Okay, Councilmember Hilton?
So I'll, I'll start with one of them that I'd like to pitch, and that's, we talked about it last time during the budget. Our Parks and Rec Commission, they talked a lot about the, the need for dedicated funding to go back into our parks, especially building up infrastructure. And I also think that's one thing that we should focus on, just because if we are going to go out to the, to the taxpayers and ask them for a bond to build a new facility, I really think that we need to have a constant revenue stream into our old facilities as well. So we have a, we have a policy that I'd like to, I don't know the specific name to it, because it's, it's not actually a policy, it's in resolutions. But what I'd like to list, best for it to look at, is a policy where 1% to 3% year-end savings go back into the park infrastructure. And like I, like I was saying, last meeting, there's two other policies where we do that. One of them was with the pension trust, and then our reserve policy. So that's, that's one that I'd like to try to get on the agenda.
You're talking 1% to 3% of the year-end savings. If we save a million dollars at the end of the year, you know, 3% is $30,000.
Where do we go with that?
So this is all surplus that we have, for instance, unused, I think there's 8%, that's a slush in there for employees that is unused, because of, all of that monies is included in this amount that we would pull the 1% to 3% from?
Yeah, so maybe you can explain how the, the, section 115 trust works. That's the policy I'd want to go in.
The council, the council has a policy at the end of the year, and the financials are all completed. We typically have surplus or leftover funds. And the policy for that, I believe, is 25% of that surplus goes into the section 115 trust as a transfer. And then the council could come up with other conditions for the end of year savings. Let's say your million dollars, you, if you do 3%, that's 30,000. But they already have 25% going to the 115 trust.
And so the, if we were looking at the last couple of fiscal years and the projection for the next one, what would we, what would we estimate that surplus to be?
That's in the five-year forecast, but we don't estimate a surplus at all.
Okay.
But that's from an operational budgeting. But we do during the year have things that, you know, occur. Our revenues could come in larger, our expenditures could be lower, that's usually where the...
When you also have sometimes those 10% buffers on when you're having something come up, and it's like, "Oh, we're going to allocate 10% more, just in case it's more, and then it doesn't end up," and so...
Right, contingencies.
All the contingencies, yeah, all of that. And so, so like I said, last couple of fiscal years, what was the surplus, and what would it mount to if, if it was 3%, let's say?
Yeah, I do think we've had a million dollars in some years, the last few years. And I recall sending 250,000 or so over to the section 115 trust. So that million dollars is kind of a, a good benchmark to, to consider.
And, and to the parks, is that like to Public Works in general, or is there a specific account that's for parks improvement, or is...
There, there is a specific capital improvement program for parks. It can be put in a separate fund. It just depends on how you create the policy.
And you think 3% is enough?
I certainly think it could be more, but I, I want to start at that point. I don't want to take out too much. And just for another thing I can think of, when we had surplus, I think it was back in like 2019, 2018, we had a pretty good surplus, and we used it to like repave 7th Street parking lot, pay for the environmental work for the Sharks Ice Arena Phase 3. Like there was a couple of one-time uses that we used that. So I mean, it could be more than a million at certain times, too.
I get that. I, I would support that up to, when we discuss it on, you know, when it comes up, up to 5%. I think that's, you're starting to get to money that can actually have a little bit of impact. I mean, we got sprinkler timers coming up at $127,000, so...
Councilmember Ramirez?
So Jimmy, I'm going to probably defer to you a little bit. This is something we kind of, I want to make sure I'm looking at this chart correctly. We talked about it today. So Sunday, the mayor and I went out to the sports park for an event. And I drove out there, and it's just god awful ugly, until you actually turn into the sports park. And it's beautiful. It's welcoming. It's wonderful. And we've talked about setting money aside for one-time use in, in beautifying our gateways to enhance the opportunity to attract economic development. And so I am looking at the amount of excess in our reserves, and I would like to look at spending some of those one-time towards beautifying that area, looking at getting RFPs or bids or something, in, you know, what that would cost, you know, getting off of 101, and then coming up to the park, to make it really welcoming and compatible to what it looks like once you actually enter into that sports park.
I, I, I agree that if there's a way that we can do that, and this goes in line with what you, what you mentioned around taking over the Caltrans areas over there, and putting money towards real landscaping or what have you in, in these areas. So when you come off the freeway, it looks like other cities that I go to, and they look like you took some time and effort, and it's just not three foot high wheat grass.
And I, and I know that there are other gateways that need addressing. I would like to prioritize that one, given that the sharks are coming in. It does bring in, you know, a number of outsiders into the city with the use of the sports park. That's what I would like to propose.
Mm-hmm, yeah, definitely.
Is it okay if I add, in case it wasn't clear, I like how you mentioned like the Caltrans properties. Are you suggesting, like, all of our clover, cloverleafs and stuff, like other communities?
Absolutely. We should, absolutely, we should be looking at it, and then we should be looking to see how and what, if there's any reimbursement that we can get, we should be looking at that. And regardless, we should have an understanding of what the costs are, and whether or not it makes sense in our overall economic development plan.
That is already on the economic development director's work.
Great. Councilmember Klein? Nothing?
I got more stuff, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go after you.
The next one I have is the TOT. So to, to change the city from a specific 9%, TOT to a capped TOT plan, like other cities have, whereby we can change it by resolution as a council, as necessary with the economy or the city's needs. Right now, just so you guys know, there's the lowest in the county. The county average is 11.7, we're at nine. The average of all the Bay Area counties is also 11.7. Monterey's 12, Marina's 14. I'm pretty sure that Morgan Hills 10, I think. I don't have it down on here. But San Juan Batista's 12, Palo Alto's 15. So we're clearly, as a, as a city that wants to have some tourism and has a lot of hotels, we can definitely take advantage of that. It will require us, obviously, to go to the ballot. But I think it's worthwhile, because rather than a, you know, cost center ballot measure, it's going to be a revenue generating out of the, the money of others, not us. Everybody game on that?
Yep.
Can I do one? Can I do one at least? Um, Zach, you talked about recreation. But I would like to propose the idea of a recreation master plan for this community. I believe, do we need to have an updated recreation master plan?
We have a parks master plan that was updated...
2005-ish.
2005-ish, so it, it's probably a little overdue.
Okay.
Yeah, parks master plan is absolutely necessary. Parks and trails together are sometimes done, right, Jimmy?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I think they go together.
Good.
I, I want it to include trails.
Trails. Recreation. That's why I said recreation, not parks. Very high level. Go ahead.
Many of us talked back in February, when we were doing the council member districts, to take that meaningful effort, and as a city, now that we created districts and council member, you, you said it perfectly, where you said, "We should be engaging all year round," right? Civic engagement all year round, not just, you know, crossing our fingers and hoping that the district thing works. So, you know, I've worked with a couple of you, kind of trying to come up with best practices, good ideas, that, you know, and hoping I get this on the, on our legislative agenda, so we can have time to work on it before the next election comes up. The idea, very shortly, would be, you know, obviously let the community know who is in each of these districts, how to get in touch with them. You know, it could come in from like a mailer, it could be other types of engagement. Also, on that, on that mailer and other things that would be in this, you know, plan would obviously have the opportunity for the city to also do civic engagement, and what they want to get engagement back, like the civic center master plan.
I think it should be like a little outreach, too, of, you know, if you're interested, haul, and then run for office.
Yeah, 100%.
So we can even do a workshop, right?
Yep. So that's something that I'm dedicated to work on. I know, I know most of you are too.
What me and Zach were talking about is doing it all, all year round, not just a month before the election.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Absolutely.
You agree? Okay.
I think we have an agreement on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, next one. The LAFCO work necessary to get city boundaries to include the sports park. I know we mentioned it in the previous one, and to see what the legal ramifications costs, et cetera, are that, to try to get that done. Is that, is that a...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
All right, last, last and final one. So we, we did really well back in 2012-ish with the tobacco retail license, and through ordinance. And, but it's, it's time that we, that we review that again. And I know that staff has been working on that. And as many of you know, over the last, like, six months, the four of our smoke shops got, you know, got, yeah, that's, that's the way I'll, I'll use it. They got ding. They're selling stuff that they shouldn't be selling. And right now, we do have funding that came from public health, thankfully, that the city admin has now, to be able to work on the retail license. But that's not, that's part of the legislative item. But the other one is, Campbell actually just placed a moratorium on approving all tobacco retail shops until they brought a tobacco retail license back. I think that, you know, I see, I see that one on Monterey Road, just kind, and leavesy just kind of pop up overnight. And, you know, there's, even though ours is pretty good, we can make it a little bit more restrictive, and more of what we want to see in our community. Just using Campbell as an example, the last sentence, they had like... as an example, the last sentence, they had like six pop up within like a four-month period or whatever, right before they could even get that in there. So a month ago, they placed a moratorium. I'd like for us to consider a moratorium.
I'm willing to hear more.
Okay.
Thank you. That was my final one.
Okay, I have one more, if you don't mind. I know I said it a little bit earlier. I think we were still stuck in strategic planning session, but I wanted to make sure that I got in there the part about a more regional approach to the unhoused. Is that part of our legislative agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
I do think that one would end up in a work plan item
Yeah.
for our housing division, but it's okay to at least bring it here.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Next one is especially in light of just doing districting, the review of our campaign finance laws, donation limits, and enforcement. There's, you know, the teeth to what we have that is outside of FPPC that is here locally in our own local ordinance is to review those, have them come up to see what changes we might want and to put them into place in time for the next election cycle.
Oh, okay. Any more over here?
Just one more. There was a committee or an ad hoc committee, I think, for the Sharks. And a couple of people that were, I think that has kind of gone away because some of the people that were on that committee are no longer on council. And I think that it might be helpful to bring that committee back, to see that this keeps moving forward the way we hope for it to do.
Would we have an ad hoc during the process in the event of moves forward?
Not typically. I think it would be like, what's the goals of the ad hoc? Because the ad hoc finished their work when the agreement was entered in between the Sharks and the city. So I just wouldn't know what the role would be of the ad hoc.
I would like it to be similar to like what, there was an oversight committee type of thing with the library when that was being built.
But the Sharks are their own entity doing that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, they're building. Okay. I just, I guess I'm just, I don't want to make sure it keeps going.
So Jimmy, how do we maintain transparency with some members of the council with even now what was in the agreement or what was in the MOU?
There's a really, there's two large steps coming up. And one is finishing the financing plan. And that financing plan has to come to the council for approval. The second part is the actual lease of the property between the Sharks and the city. The facility be owned by the city but would be leased and operated by the Sharks. That is going to be a pretty long process to get council to approve. So that is not something we're going to show up at one council meeting and say, hey, here's the lease. What do you think? It will be a long process, some in closed session, some in open session, but that process will evolve over quite a bit of time, especially considering the project hasn't broke ground yet. You're looking at a lot of, especially that part, maybe two years from now if they were to break out.
The dilemma, the dilemma I see, though, is that there are other capital improvements and utilities improvements and things that you're going to be asking for us to do. And we're kind of doing them somewhat blindly without knowing the viability of this particular plan. Obviously, we have a long-term goal of developing out the sports park and we all know that. But the urgency of any one of those things is going to be directly tied to how that other part is going or whether or not we even feel, for the community, or some of us would feel, is viable, right, to help make some of those decisions. I don't understand how all of it works. I just know that if we're putting, you know, the ultimate faith without, you know, a large level of transparency.
I have a comment. Can't we, if we decide at any time, can't we put an ad hoc together with specific goals, regardless of it's Sharks Ice Arena, as a council?
I think the city attorney could tell you what the parameters are for that.
Generally speaking, you can. It has to be an agendized item. And you have to decide whether it would be a Brown Act committee or not. In other words, how many members it would have and so on. Generally, if it has less than three members and it's truly ad hoc for a limited period of time, it's not a Brown Act committee. But it has to be done by formal, agendized action of the council.
So I kind of like that idea because it keeps us a little bit more mobile and we can do that in a very short period of time and quickly instead of going to a legislative agenda that gets stuck in a year. Okay. Is it okay to that?
Yeah, I just, and then I do have a question with regards to the lease that you were talking about. Do we not break ground before that lease agreement or is that kind of...
That's not on the legislative agenda. Sorry. Next.
I think you might already have this one, but just with a little bit of additional detail. The exploration of all the options for fire services, fire and health services in all the various ways, giving us obviously adequate time to really become educated. I'm not, I don't have a lot of subject matter expertise in this and I'd like to have enough time and to get public feedback. And really to put it in a way that is, if I can think of it this way, like you're buying a stereo, okay? Like it's the, these are the key things. These are the 10 key things that kind of matter. These are the pros and the cons. This is the cost differentials in ways that all line up in a way that, in plain English, that not just us, but even the public can really see how the decisions are being made. That would be my request as we're getting to it.
Is that, is that part of your earlier conversation about overall public safety? You want to have a study?
That's, well, that's, I mean, that was Kelly bringing that up. And specifically, that was around police, not necessarily fire, because it was about the beat system and the number of police officers that she had concern about prior.
But I have a feeling that we were talking about that at the strategic plan portion. Did that make it to the legislative agenda?
I'm sorry. I'm confused about what exactly you're asking made it to the legislative agenda.
I think that a couple of members here wanted to be able to have a...
I don't think she got a thumbs up or a not thumbs up for that one.
Right, so I just want to make sure.
But I would not put that in the same boat as what I'm talking about on the fire and health.
Yeah, I think that's different. I think, because what I said was we already have a third party with LAFCO saying what we need for fire. But what I think you're asking for is looking at whether, as we move down the line, are we going with Cal? Are we going with county? Are we staying with city? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, how we're going to deliver city services in terms of fire and health as we're turning the corner into next year, how we're going to go about doing that and having the options all presented to us in a way that is the way we can understand and that the public can understand. And I know that Jimmy's on that, but I didn't know how it fits into the overall legislative agenda. So that's why I was raising it.
And I think when staff's trying to come up with a wording from it, I think we should use the wording that's in the MOU already with Local 2805 that basically talks about exploring the regionalization. Because if we use the same, if we use the same language...
Sure, sure. I mean, that's one of the options and it should be, it should be expressed probably in a similar way so that there's a correlation, no doubt.
Well, and the only reason why I say that is I'm not, I'm not a labor union attorney at all. But to have a bargaining unit that already has contract services, you don't want to basically say like, oh, next year, we're going to think about CalFire. You want to talk about what's already in place in there, right? So you're not...
There is so far in the weeds with me over my head that I don't even know. So I'm just going to hand it off. I think the intent of what I'm asking for...
So everybody agrees with that? The fire service?
Is it in the work plan already, Jimmy?
Okay, so see, there. There you go.
Yeah, it was actually in the budget message.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, I wanted to add those last couple of little details, that's all.
Okay, but now I'm going to go back. To be clear, now that's separate. To be clear, I think we do not have any long-term legislative agenda about... PD. Staffing of PD. We do not have that on there yet. Do you want that on there?
So I wanted to look at, as we move forward, a third-party, a third-party needs assessment to validate whether we do or do not need to move forward with increasing our police or, you know, before we even talk about getting it on the ballot or having an impact on the budget, is it even necessary, right?
Okay.
So it's not our gut feeling. It's not just coming from the public.
So you'd rather have somebody from out of town, knows nothing about Gilroy, come and tell us what we need over our chief of police and his captains?
I believe he brought it up in that last meeting, that we have to have some sort of other outside work done to determine the beats and I'm confused, but...
Yeah, if you're going to meet standards and such, you don't do that internally. The example is the fire standards of coverage. That is done by a company that analyzes numerous things and not just what, you know, some of our staff members would recommend. I think it's a lot deeper than that. So fire and police standards of coverage?
No, we already have fire. LAFCO has already determined fire, third-party, but I'm talking police.
Yeah, I wouldn't go so far to say LAFCO did determine that. They did a fire service study, but they didn't, they did it more in a regional, which is their charge, but they didn't, they didn't express to say you need X, Y, and Z.
Okay, so then let me ask you, or others, should we go both police and fire then? I'm happy with that.
Sure, absolutely. Needs assessment for both.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, okay.
Now when he brings back the number, you probably get a different answer.
At least you'll get it. And that's what you were asking for, really. You need to know.
Yeah.
All right. Any further?
I think I'm good for now.
All right.
That was fun, though, right?
Yeah, it was good.
That's what we pitch it for the next few years.
It's good.
Hey, I'm new to this. What do you want?
So last slide here was just some things that were said during strategic planning. Unfooted state mandates, is there help? Consequences for noncompliance. We actually do have an item on the work plan about talking about state mandates. One is the trash capture devices that council did not support. And what does something like that really mean when you don't? And then this is the rest of the last notes from the end of our strategic plan.
Yeah, I'll hit on one of those to look at, which is this communication strategy, city presence, one. I think that what the police department has done recently in terms of social media has been amazing in terms of engaging the public with what's going on in social media. And I would like to see how we can, you know, elevate the city as a whole to a similar kind of engagement with the community rather than just putting out, hey, we're going here and doing this, but really engaging when the community members have a question and answering it and finding out information. It is the new future for cities and city engagement and I would like us to explore that.
Okay, that'll go on legislative agenda? Yeah, I like it. Love it. Yeah. You guys okay with it down there? Okay.
Okay, so I want to talk to you a little bit about how this really comes about. So we have a lot of items on here. And what we do in the work plan is we first start with mandatory. Those are the things we absolutely have to do. And so a lot of times when it's asked, why didn't this get done or why didn't that get done? Well, one, it wasn't mandatory. It was discretionary. So when you see our work plans, you're going to see items that say discretionary and you're going to have to decide as a group if that discretionary item is that important to you to where you move that up the line. Because we'll put them where we think they are, but at the end of the day, we take our direction from you. And for some departments that have a lot of mandatory items, the schedule for getting discretionary items is very challenging without adding resources or coming up with some other plans. So I just want to warn you that when you do see the work plan, there may be things on there that you ask for, but we don't feel like they will supersede some other things. And so that's just part of the art of adopting a budget, but we'll give you that information. So the next steps for us is the fiscal year 2627 budget adoption, which we will recommend on June 2, 2025. That'll have the department work plans. It'll also have the resource allocation, which is really the budget. And then the legislative agenda policies, and then we will review council policies. And as we stated before, the council certainly has the ability to line item, program, veto, whatever you'd like to call it. But we certainly encourage council to adopt as much as they possibly can to be comfortable with on June 2. So you give yourself some time to work through some of these other items. And then our new fiscal year starts July 1, 2025.
Can I, can we go back for just one thing? I would like to add, you said there were a program or what else on the legislative program or policies?
Policies.
Policies. So can I ask for one additional policy? And that is to have the, when we come back from our break at the end of June, I think is our break, that at that point, the packet is one week posted and available, the final packet one week prior to our meetings. As we had talked about that, you said that was going to happen in June. I don't think that's going to happen in June.
Actually, we have been doing that.
Well, there's still some, they're all drafts still a week ahead. So I'm...
They're always going to be drafts the week ahead. What we do, and Bryce has done this, is we release the entire packet and then on Thursday, he gives you the updates and changes, which recently have been very few, so.
And is it, is it available to the public a week ahead? Is it posted?
No, it is not.
So that's what I'm asking, so that the, so that the public has a time to review it and get in touch with us if they have questions and that type of thing. So that they, there's more opportunity rather than just over the weekend for us to comment back to them or ask staff questions that were being asked.
I would say that's up to council policy to evaluate. I couldn't commit to doing that one way or another up here.
I mean, my only comments on that are, you know, when there's small red lines or small changes or this or that or the other, it's, that's completely understandable. It's, if there are large sections of stuff that has to come in that doesn't make it in into the draft that then has to be later, that's not in the spirit of, I think, what Kelly and I, you know, have been discussing. And I don't, I don't know how to get that into policy or not policy. Then there's also the public side of it as well. But that's where my particular desire is, is that I don't want to see large chunks of stuff coming in on a Thursday, right, that wasn't in there on previous, whatever, Monday or whatever it is. So I don't know if that's a policy. I don't know how everybody else feels about. I'm a Mr. Transparent, so I'd love to have the thing be out there. I'd also like to have advice from staff to basically say, well, here's the pros and cons of, you know, of doing that, you know, whether it be operationally or, you know, in the visibility and the way things look.
Does that mean, so that means that we would get something on the legislative agenda and that they would come back and they would study it, figure out ways to come back to meet those needs that you guys were asking for? And if there's a cost associated with it, then you know.
Well, I mean, it's similar to what, I mean, it's exactly what planning does. Planning has it posted publicly one week before the planning commission meeting.
I'm game for that.
Okay.
Game for taking a look.
Yes.
What has been, just since you've been doing this, we've been doing this, the amount of changes that have gone from that initial drop to the next Thursday? Has there been much that's been added? Because I know the concern is a lot being dropped on Thursday.
There's not just added to. I mean, again, if you put it from Monday, right, if you put a bunch, because the idea is not to work on it in the last day or two, at least for me.
Right.
And if on Tuesday or Wednesday I do a ton of reading and work in one particular area and then it just gets dumped off the agenda altogether, it's kind of a bummer as well, right? So, and I get that there's some of that that's, but it also helps keep it a little bit more true if it's in the public, right? They also have an understanding of what's coming or going in the agenda a little bit more. So anyway.
Well, I think if it's helpful, we'll put out the legislative agenda that let's talk about agenda publication process because there's some intricacies here that I don't think we have to get in here, but I certainly understand the desire for knowledge. And I think there's going to be pros and cons to that and I'd like to hear the council weigh that.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it for 9.1? Okay, sorry. Just to be transparent, is there any public comment for 9.1?
We have no speakers this time.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 10, introduction of new business. Adopt a resolution setting the 2025 fireworks service fee. Staff.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the community. Tonight, we have the 2025 fireworks service fee for your consideration and adoption. The methodology for determining the fireworks service fee changed last year because of Assembly Bill 1403. AB 1403... AB 1403 provides guidance regarding fireworks enforcement and fireworks funding. AB 1403 allows the city to charge a fee to help offset the actual and reasonable costs incurred by the city for the activities you see on the slides. Processing, issuing permits, inspecting fireworks stands, conducting public outreach campaigns, enforcing the provisions of the city code, and fire operation suppression efforts that are related to safe and sane fireworks. AB 1403 also limits the amount a city may charge to not exceed 7% of the gross sales of the fireworks sold in the city during the applicable period. For 2024, the Safe and Same Wholesale Fireworks vendor here, that's TNT Fireworks, they reported gross sales in Gilroy of $463,610. So in accordance with 14, AB 1403, the amount the city may charge, you know, total for combined fireworks-related fees in 2025, that's 7% times that, that's how we derive the $32,452.70. The fireworks-related fees comprised of the fireworks booth permit fee, storage yard permit fee, and the fireworks service fee. So you see our calculations there for the booth permit fee. We have 14, 14 booths, so totaling $11,466. Storage yard permit fee, just for one storage location, $467. And basically, we back-calculated the fireworks service fee from that total that's allowed. So that comes out to $20,519.70. And this fireworks service fee will support the public education outreach efforts, additional public safety, to enforce provisions of city code, and the fire suppression efforts related to safe and sane fireworks. So staff's recommendation for council to adopt a resolution setting the 2025 fireworks service fee at $20,519.70 in accordance with Assembly Bill 1403. Thank you.
Question for Sharon?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So the, the limitation of 7%, is it on the current year amount, or it's on the prior year? I know you used the prior year.
Correct.
But according to the law, which is it?
Oh, we believe it's the prior year, because, you know, you need all that data in order for the prior year.
Well, that's what we're setting it at, right?
Correct.
But, but to be compliant, you can't be over 7% in the year that it's happening, right? So in other words, it could be that we sell $600,000 of fireworks this year in the city, and then we could be allowed $42,000 in actual fees, right? By law, is that how it works?
Uh, I don't know if the bill is really that clear about that, when it says applicable period, because, you know, you can also look at us, whether there's.
So if you happen to overcharge, right, and, and let's say you had a projected amount and you hadn't overcharged, and so you anticipated, just a curiosity here, and you anticipated it was going to go up 10%, so you increase this fee to account for what you think it's going, and it ends up being more than that, can't we just charge the lesser amount or credit it back so that we maximize the amount of revenue that the city gets?
You mean to refund them?
Yeah, basically, or, yeah, you're giving them a credit, or however you want to phrase it. I know it's not a ton of money, but if we had $600,000 in sales, we'd be leaving, you know, $15,000, $13,000 on the table.
Um, you could do that, you would just have to, you would be estimating every year, and then.
Okay.
Doing a refund through that method.
Okay. That's just from my own knowledge, thank you.
Yes.
When you say they report, there's no, that's the honor system, there's no auditing?
Correct, but we get that in writing from them. They give us a list of their sales and the, and the total, this is the amount they provide.
By booth?
Uh, by TNT fireworks.
No, no, excuse me, TNT, but it has, how many, 12 or 13 booths around Gilroy?
Yeah, that's the total they provided.
Yeah, so they don't, they don't line item it by booth, that just one sales.
By booth, correct.
They do, they do, okay.
Yeah, they're correct, mhm.
Okay.
They give us by booth, and then they give us a total also.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Okay, I'm looking for, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll, motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by council member Klein, second by council member Marks, to adopt the resolution of the City Council of Gilroy, setting the 2025 fireworks service fee at $20,519.70 in accordance with Assembly Bill 1403. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Who?
Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Boto?
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. Okay, moving on to item 10.2, consent the appointment of Ken Binder, Calpors retired as interim police chief following successful completion of all peace officer standards and training, post-hiring recruitments, and adoption, adoption of a resolution approving the appointment and employment agreement. Staff, please.
Good evening again. Due to the upcoming retirement of Police Chief Pedro Espinoza, the city is working through the steps to fill the police chief position on an ongoing basis. This won't be completed for a few months due to some remaining steps and required background process for external candidates. Therefore, we have a need to bring on an interim police chief during this time period. Retired Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office Under Sheriff Ken Binder is available to serve in this leadership position. He is here tonight, sitting sized right up to the staff table, fit right in. Mr. Binder is a California Public Employees Retirement System retired annuitant. He retired in December of '24. He does possess the background, education, experience, and skills to serve as an interim police chief, pending successful completion of all of the required peace officer standards and training hiring requirements for a sworn peace officer chief position. He has 27 years of law enforcement experience, 26 of which were at the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office, and he rose through the ranks and served in the role of undersheriff from 2020 to 2024. He has his bachelor's degree in business administration with a concentration in finance from San Jose State, and a master of arts in criminal justice from Arizona State, and he is also a graduate of the FBI National Academy. There's various CalPERS rules and regulations that we have to follow when we're looking to bring on a retired annuitant to assist us on an interim basis, so under Government Code Section 21221H, we can hire a retired annuitant to serve in an interim position when there is an immediate need for expertise and specialized skills, and we have a recruitment underway for the position. So we've already completed many of the steps in the hiring process, so that piece is met. We have to comply with the number of hours he can work, and the staff report in your packet outlines the police chief job duties that would be performed in the position. He'll be paid $127.40 per hour, $127.40 per hour, with no other benefits or incentives. And so with this appointment, we will be able to continue some continuity in the police department until we fill the position on an ongoing basis, and we want to get this piece of the approval process out of the way, because we are fast-tracking and going through the remaining steps of the post-re requirements for bringing Mr. Binder on board, and so we want to be able to make his appointment effective as soon as those are complete, rather than having to wait for yet another council meeting. So that is why this is before you tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Fugazi?
So when is it expected that those things will be complete and Mr. Binder can start as the new police chief?
Yeah, if everything goes as, as I hope it, it's going to go, I'm sort of thinking June 2.
So.
So we'll have a, an acting chief within the department until June 2, when he comes on board.
So this is, we're, we're getting an interim police chief, we'll have an acting police chief between whatever Friday or whenever.
Friday to whenever he can start. If it's before June 2, that'll be great.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions? Okay, so no further questions, I'll entertain a motion. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. Public comment?
We have no speakers on this item.
And there's two items that need to be approved for this.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'm going to try to do them both at once. I got approval from the city attorney. So I'm going to entertain a motion, and here it is. Consent the city administrator's recommendation to appoint Ken Binder as interim police chief effective upon successful completion of all peace officer standards and trainings, hiring requirements, and adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gilroy approving the appointment of Ken Binder as interim police chief pursuant to Government Code Section 21221, and authorizing the city administrator to execute the employment agreement to include setting the employment start date following successful completion of all post-hiring Somebody give me a motion.
I move.
So I have, I have a, a motion by council member Bracco, and a second by council member Ramirez. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Boto?
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to item 11, future council-initiated agenda items, we have none. Item 12, city administrators' report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two quick reports. One, I want to thank everybody who came out to the Utes Creek and helped pick up trash. There was plenty of it, not as much as there used to be, but you can really see the difference in the creek in the last few years when a lot of folks have donated their time to go out and pick up trash. It looks so much better out there, and so I'm very grateful for the, the groups that put that together. And second of all, I'd be remiss without announcing that tonight is the last city council meeting for Pedro Espinoza, our police chief. He has served 30 years in public safety, 22 of those here in Gilroy, and five as the chief. He is the first hire I had, and one of the best hires I've ever had. The official retirement ceremony for Chief Espinoza is on Thursday at 3 o'clock at New Hope Church, and we'll be doing some recognitions and items like that at that ceremony if you're able to attend. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 13, city attorneys' report.
It's an interesting social media case, but I'll do it earlier, at, at some meeting in the future when we have a little earlier in the evening. So should we go into closed session?
Sure. Closed session, please. Item 14.
Conference with labor negotiator, collective bargaining units pursuant to Gilroy Government Code Section 54957.6, Gilroy City Code 17A114. Collective bargaining units, Gilroy Police Officers Association, representing Gilroy police officers, Gilroy Management Association, representing mid-management employees, unrepresented exempt employees, confidential department heads and council-appointed. City negotiators, Jimmy Forbes, LeAnn McPhillips.